Hello everyone and greetings from Budapest, Hungary.
Hello from Kosovo.
My name is Joris Cologne.
My name is Risa.
I'm Ian Smith.
Cameron Casalos.
Edward Moses.
My name is Afy Sheik and I'm head of stone and integrity services.
I'm senior manager of member associations governance services at FIFA.
Integrity is the bedrock of all competitive sport. Without it, there is nothing.
By definition, it is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles.
Integrity is surely one of the most significant elements in sports.
As a cricket umpire, one of the most important tasks for any umpire is to make sure the decision making is as efficient as possible. This can only be possible if umpires work with integrity.
We are a member of SEGA and not only because we believe in integrity in sports, but to the fact that we believe in coalitions and collective efforts to achieve change.
We all know that sport is one of the most powerful things on the planet for bringing about societal change. And we all want to be part of that and we want you to be part of it. And we absolutely all need to do it together.
This is a task none of us can achieve on our own. It is one that all of us must achieve together.
I believe that together we're stronger.
Together, united, we can affect positive change by developing and promoting integrity principles and values.
Organizations such as SEGA who are there to make standards better and to uniform all the standards throughout the industry are needed.
We know that sport can change the world. Athletes can definitely help to spread good values against, I would say racism, discrimination, all those things that you see. I think it's very important that organizations, sponsors, all the main actors join together to create better ways, better network.
ISST is proud to be associated with the SEGA movement.
I am proud to partner with the Sport Integrity Global Alliance.
Welcome along to a very special afternoon showcasing our SEGA Champions. My name is Ben Jacobs. I'm your host for the next two hours or so. We've got two star studded panels and some video testimonials as well, offering you insight into how athletes can champion sports integrity and the role that they play in amplifying our global message here at SEGA. We'll touch upon various topics including corruption, inclusion, whistleblowing, and discuss how the COVID-19 pandemic has changed the sporting landscape from the perspective of our athletes. Please do get involved as well, ask plenty of questions. If you're on Twitter, you can use the hashtag SEGA Champions and send us some photos as well of where you're watching from. Have a bit of fun with us. I'm actually in Kensington in London and don't be surprised if my dog makes a little bit of a cameo later. Sports integrity chat does tend to get her barking. But let's dive straight in and we will hear first a welcome keynote from SEGA CEO Emmanuel Macedo de Maderos.
Hi, welcome to the SEGA special session. This one fully dedicated to the SEGA Champions. Men and women who you know well, men and women who on and off the sporting grounds around the world, representing so many different sports, give us reasons to believe in the unique power sport. Champions who give us reason to believe that if we really want, if we work for it and respect the rules, we can meet the challenges and win. Because ladies and gentlemen, as you have heard me say quite often, impossible is nothing. These are champions who give us reasons to believe that if we stick together and act as a team in moments like the one we are facing, confronted with the toughest crisis of our lives, we will get through. Confined at home, working in multiple shifts at the frontline, sick or saving lines at the hospital, at the lab, at the supermarket, at the restaurant, cleaning our streets, delivering our supplies, on a wheel of an ambulance or a bus, or simply ensuring our safety. Read my lips, we will prevail, we will get through. We will transform adversities into opportunities of success and merge, emerge stronger, stronger as individuals, stronger also as nations. Because that is what we humans do with faith, with confidence, never surrendering, never giving up and never giving in. And just look at what sport has been doing over the past seven, eight months. During this global pandemic, there was not one single day we haven't heard a message of solidarity, a message of hope, a message of confidence from the sporting community. True examples of leadership, community service, altruism, generosity and dedication to others. From Marcus Rashford to Cristiano Ronaldo, from Louis Saha, our latest SEGA champion, to Stacey Copeland and so many others. Famous or simply anonymous athletes have been a powerhouse and a source of inspiration and motivation to so many young people and children who have been in home confinement. We have also expressed our gratitude to all frontline workers and we do it again now. But today we want to shine a light on the great work athletes, the athlete community has been doing. And we want to say to them very clearly and from the heart, thank you. And what fantastic lineup we have here today with the SEGA Champions, ladies and gentlemen. To all of them goes also our recognition for teaming up with SEGA, for volunteering, for dedicating themselves to this noble cause, a cause that is ours of all of us. And that is why each one of us is needed, because each one of us can truly make the difference. Yes, I do not ignore the elephant in the room. I guess no one can ignore the elephant in the room. So I want to assure you that I hear you loud and clear. And I do understand that many of you feel upset or frustrated. I want you to know that I do not blame you for being tired of old rhetorics and beaten sunbites by all mentalities. How can anyone seriously expect you to believe that without integrity, sport can operate miracles? Just yesterday, I spent two hours, two precious hours of my life, as I imagine some of you have done, watching an international conference on sport and the role sport can play in European recovery. And yet, not one single time the word sport integrity was mentioned. Can you understand that? And can you understand how anyone can expect sport to recover from this devastating global crisis? If sport is deprived also from the same financial support that other sectors are receiving? Because when the European financial bazooka that was supposed to reach all the sporting community is not getting to all the recipients, there's something that must be wrong. Sport is not getting one cent in countries like mine, Portugal. And why is that? We must address it. But let me tell you very clearly that we must focus now on what is a key priority. Understanding that there's a lot to be done, but focusing on what really matters. And this is why I tell you and I ask you, don't be bystander. Be a champion and act like one. Be constructive, make your voice heard, talk to others, take action, press for change, join us. Join SEGA, be part of our global movement, a fantastic global movement that is growing spontaneously, spontaneously all over the world. Support our mission and help us to usher sport into a new era. A sport made not of scandal and cases, but of values and causes. Truly worthy of your trust, of your confidence and of your passion. My name, you know it, it's Emmanuel Macedo de Maderos. I'm the global CEO of SEGA and I count on you. I count on the champion that lives in you. So stay healthy, stay safe, stay strong, help others and come along. Thank you. I hope you enjoyed the SEGA Champions. They are here also because of you. Thank you.
Emmanuel, thank you very much indeed. Well said. Powerful words to kick things off in our SEGA Champion Special. I have to add though, I must have missed the memo about wearing a designer jacket and pocket square across the course of the afternoon. Suddenly looking at Emmanuel, who's always dapper, I feel a little bit underdressed. But what we are not going to be is lacking in passion and we are going to have conversations, as Emmanuel alluded to, that truly mattered from an athlete-led perspective. So let's dive straight in with our first session. We've got two. If you are just joining us, you can use the hashtag SEGA Champions and that will allow you to interact with us on Twitter. I'm really keen to hear from many of you who either have questions or comments throughout the course of the afternoon. Our first webinar has four athletes, each with their own wonderful pedigree across a variety of different sports. We've got Louis Saha, who we heard just a moment ago, is a new SEGA champion. He is of course also a former Fulham and Manchester United forward and represented the French national team as well and was a runner-up to at the FIFA 2006 World Cup. He's now the co-founder of Axis Stars. We'll hear more about that in just a moment. Alongside him, we have Karen Corb as well. She's also a SEGA champion, a two-time Paralympic champion as well in wheelchair tennis, a 10-time member of the USA World Team. When you work with all of these athletes and have to introduce them, you feel very small and useless on a sporting talent front because their accolades could take up the whole afternoon. Karen was also on our task force for race, diversity and inclusion. We've got Ben Gollings as well, world record holder in rugby sevens, former English rugby captain in sevens as well. Scored an incredible 2,652 points and he's now part of the optimization hub. And if you need a reminder of that, there is a giant logo of it behind him with all of the details on it. But I'm going to turn first to Tessa Sanderson CBE because she's making more of a cameo. So we'll have a little chat with her and then we'll bring in the other panelists. Tessa needs no introduction. She is an Olympic gold medalist from Los Angeles, 1984. She represented Great Britain six times in the Olympics and is now a motivational speaker and brand ambassador. Tessa, thanks for joining us. I know you're a little bit tight.
Hi.
It's great to have your company though. Let's just start with your overarching response to what Emmanuel said. We've heard, haven't we, during the pandemic, a lot of words about how sport can maintain and promote its integrity. How do we ensure that those words do, as Emmanuel alluded to, translate into action? Tessa, your thoughts? I think Tessa has frozen unfortunately, so let's see whether we can get her back. We hear a little bit of movement now. Tessa, just to check, I think your screen froze for a moment. You can hear us clearly. You're back with us?
I can hear you but the picture just keeps cutting out. Everybody's just still.
Lovely. Well, we can hear you. So let's just kick off. I think you probably heard the question, but I'll just repeat it in case. How can we turn words about integrity into action in sport?
Well, for me, the thing is, I've always believed in equality, opportunity and fairness. And I really do think that with the integrity of the sport and different sport, I think, but when you look at athletes, I think with what's happening nowadays in the past, I think athletes just really need to speak out and not be afraid to speak out and just to say more or less about especially fairness. If there is something which is happening, which you see which is unfair, unfair equality, then you know there should be in their rights to really sort of voice themselves. And also making sure that the sport is kept very clean, cleaned themselves first of all. Because one of the things that we've got to look at is that, you know, like Emmanuel was saying, young people see their own sort of elite or icon athletes and they wish to, they would probably replicate a lot of the things they do. So with the integrity of the sport is to make sure that, you know, we do keep the clean sport. We do have a voice that you can speak out about things and make sure that, you know, you feel that the things are going the way they should be going and that it does feel right. But one of the things that I do get concerned about is that the young people who look on people who are doing sport and call them their icons. And if they're doing something which is not, you know, fair or right or they see that it's doing something that is not doing the sport any good, they will try and follow. And that's one of the objectives that I do have.
How, Tessa, though, from an athlete's perspective, can we encourage more current athletes to whistleblow? Because as a former athlete, you have more experience, more access perhaps to decision makers. But when you're young, you're focused in your field on trying to win a gold medal and you think, for example, somebody who is one of your competitors is cheating, probably most relevantly in your particular sport in doping. And you may not have all of the proof or you could be intimidated or you could be told to turn a blind eye. How do you get more young athletes to not only stay clean in the first place, but whistleblow when they do see these discrepancies relating to integrity?
Well, it's all, it's all a bit of a learning, you know, education and also belief. Belief in your coach as well, because I had a coach who was absolutely superb and he was totally against drugs, everything like that. And, and you know, he just wanted to make sure that the opportunity was there. I trained hard. If I wasn't there at the time that he said, you know, he's face, Tessa, where are you? Come down and train. He taught, he was speaking to me about sort of, you know, things like, if you did take this, whatever it was drugs or anything, that was bad for the sport. That you weren't, winners don't come by taking drugs. One of the other things I want to talk about with, I speak with young people about is that even though you may go on to be an international athlete or so, the focus is that you must remember that you must try and prepare or plan for life after sport. Because a lot of them don't. A lot of the young people are so hyped up about getting into sport, fantastic. And they want to do sport, they want to achieve and want to do well. But then you see when something happens or if you've got to retire from sport really early, there's no plan. It's a tough situation, hard work. So the thing is, what I would encourage some of the young people to do is to make sure that you do have a plan, education, big asset of it comes into play. Don't just think that, okay, once I've got to an international level, all's going to be fantastic. Because you must remember, you're not in the arena for a lifetime. And after you finish that, something has got to be done. You've got to, maybe if you haven't earned your millions like athletics, if you're not lucky enough to earn your millions, then you've got to have something to fall back on. I've done in the sense where I studied a bit of journalism, done a lot of networking talks, look at networking events that I've attended to. And this is what put me into doing a lot of motivational speaking now. You know, taking up a lot of other challenges that I probably wouldn't do. Even I went into a little bit of modeling at some stage because, you know, all this is just confidence, give a new confidence in yourself. So when you finish your sport, you've got something that you can fall back on. But you know, it's great to encourage them to be in there. But it's all about training hard, working hard, dedicating yourself, being fair. Play a fair game in sport because if you don't, there's going to come a time where it does catch you up.
Yeah, absolutely. And well said. And on the point of planning for life after sport, we'll hear from Louis Saha in a moment because Axis Stars specifically was founded to help athletes plan financially and logistically for their life after sport. I think most of our panelists could actually go into modeling if they want to earn a little bit of extra money. I think I'm doomed though, if that is my only fallback. Tessa, just before I let you go and bring in the other panelists though, I want to bring in a question from a member of our SEGA Youth Council. Throughout the course of the afternoon, we're inviting not only you watching at home, but also members of our SEGA Youth Council to dial in and ask some questions. And we've got one here for you now, Tessa, and it comes from Andalija Milovanovic. So let's see if we can get her up and hear the question.
Hi, my name is Angelia Milovanovic and I'm from Belgrade, Serbia. Currently I'm working as Public Relations Officer at University Sports Federation of Belgrade and Women's Basketball Club Partizan Belgrade, also an Sports Integrity Global Alliance Youth Council member. So I have a question for Tessa Sanderson. You were professional athlete and after finishing your career, you stayed in the field of sports. So what were the main reasons for you to make that decision? And also is there that one goal that you set to yourself that you wanted to achieve after finishing your professional career and that is related to the problems that you had as an athlete? Thank you.
Well, okay, that's a great question. Well, first of all, I was the age 13 when I started, you know, my training for athletics and seriously started training when I was 16. My teacher discovered me. But then the reason for me starting athletics is because, you know, I was from a very working class family. I wanted to travel and see the world and my family couldn't afford it. So when I had my first competition, I went to Durham, which was for the English Schools Championships. It cost me nothing and I thought it cost my parents nothing because I thought, you know, let me hold on to this. And so it did me a lot of good. It took me out of the area which I was, where the first chance to stay somewhere else in town and, you know, just be a different environment. I was, I was very much a sporty person. I love sport. My family wanted me, my mom and dad wanted me to be a nurse. But when I went to hospital and saw all that blood and everything, they're doing a great job. I thought, Tessa, this isn't for me. But the main thing that encouraged me is that I wanted to travel and see the world. And this for me was the best way of trying to do that. Once I had my first ticket and, you know, and it really didn't cost me anything. But I was glad that, you know, my teacher was behind me because she was always instilling me, keep your education, keep your education going. Because you never know what might happen, as I was saying, you know. I got injured halfway, well, you know, couple in 1981 and I was out of the sport for two years and then came back in 1984 and won the Olympic Games then. But during that time, there was a lot of things that I had to face. I worked a nine to five job and I was lucky enough to have someone who was, you know, fair, was good to me in order to let me have the time to go and train, put in the work that I needed to train whilst I was still working. So I was lucky to have an employee like that. But with the profession of athletics, it gave me a great pathway. It was the best decision that I could have chosen. And at that young age, a lot of young girls want to go out and have good time and disco and all this. But yes, fine. But I think in setting your goal, which I did, and my goal was to travel. And once I got in there and competing and I wanted to go to the next level. And the next level was to try and make the international team of Team TB. Once I got in there, the next goal I set forward was to also try and make the Olympic Games, any Olympic Games. So 1976 was my first Olympic game. And although I finished 10th in the final, it wasn't really where I was at. I wanted more still. So I was still pushing the boat out, how to keep that hunger going, how to, you know, strive for the next thing. And it is right about setting your goal, setting the next challenge for you in whatever you are doing. For me, it was sport. So I wanted to become head of my game. I wanted to make the Olympics and the ultimate was to win an Olympic gold medal. It took me 12 years, but during those times, there was a lot of things I had to go through. The injury, the hard work, the work, but all these things I accepted that it was all part of the buildup and I had to do because I had no sponsorship at the time. So I had to show a way of how to create that pathway for myself. And one of that was making sure I had a job where the education from school comes in and I could do that job. That job kept me going towards my training, didn't put a lot of pressure on my parents. And then once I got to my training, did well at that, went to my competition, did well in my competition, learned my game, have to learn your game very well. And from that, the rest became history.
Great stuff, Tessa. Thank you very much for your insight. I know you've got a dash, but hopefully when you've got a bit more time, we can get you on again, involve you in SEGA and talk more because it's fascinating to get your insight and maybe next time you can bring the gold medal as well.
I hope so too.
From 1984.
Yeah, there was something actually that I wanted to quickly say because I know that I've got to go. But it's on, you know, sort of like the Black Lives Matters because I know that's probably something that's going to be brought up. But I very quickly, Louis and all these guys laughed. But for me, I've always said, you know what? A person should never ever be judged by the quality of their skin because, you know, the color of their skin. Because I've worked so much with schools and colleges, everything like that now, putting out that message. People need to be educated.
I think Tessa's just...
If you're good at what you do, you know, the quality is there. You've worked hard, done whatever you need to do. People should be judged by what they have done.
Absolutely. Tessa, you did drop out for a moment, but I think we got the main point and it's certainly been great catching up with you. I'm going to let you go so you're not late for other important commitments. But thanks again for joining us and we look forward to catching up.
I hope to join you next time. Bye bye everybody. Enjoy. Bye bye.
Thank you for that. Bye. Tessa Sanderson there. So let's bring in the rest of the panel now and open up the debate. Louis, I want to start with you if I may, because some of the things that Tessa raised are relevant to you and Axis Stars in particular. She spoke a little bit about educating athletes as and when they're playing. It seems to me that Axis Stars, which you co-founded along with Kate Hamer, is also about extending that education so footballers and sports stars know what to do after they retire or when they're thinking about retirement. So give us an overview of what Axis Stars is and how you think it helps both athletes and integrity.
Thank you very much for having me on the panel. So it's great to be alongside those great athletes. So what Axis Stars is, is try to provide, it's a safe environment. So safe is, it's very important to build that confidence that we say, to build that integrity and then having like people who can educate themselves or educate in a certain way. Because when you look at the actual focus that you need to have during your career, during your, your passion that you try to express as, you know, as much as you can, you have like a lot of, let's say, interaction with people that comes and then goes. And sometimes they just shoot the message, make it very hard. So during my times, I felt like it was really difficult to pretty much like get the right picture. So Axis Stars is helping those guys to be facing only safe, let's say, secure and certified service providers. And as well like put the whole ecosystem of athletes and artists all together so they can share their stories, they can share their actual experiences, good or bad. Like this, it can educate, compare, they can understand exactly what was the path of a big star, but a smaller one or less famous, let's say. So all those things are not available in the platforms, are they, right now? So we build something very specific for them to actually, as I said, having like certain way to browse opportunities, profiles of service providers and get the right programs in terms of education. So people who have experiences, we can help them to actually get that education over. It's very important to do it during, to do it, I would say, with autonomy. Because this is where you can actually learn from yourself, you know, who you are, what you like and not someone to actually direct or every of your moves. And this is very important to actually get to actually your hand dirty in some ways. So it brings, as I said, confidence, it brings as well, I would say, self-esteem. And like I would say, it's a good platform for the future. So there is like an app who is available 24/7 in your own control to help those guys to connect to each other. So I will be happy to speak to Ben or to Karen and all of the panelists. All those are different stories to share. This is very important for me while my education. I'm not a woman. I may understand the actual struggle of women. I may understand the struggle of a black guy or someone who is maybe in difficulty mentally. All those things are really important to share in the safe and secure environments because sometimes it's really hard for us, let's say, to try to talk to each other or something like this and you educate ourselves because may if there is a press who's taking care of those things, you, they get stories out and it's not right, you know? So trying to educate in a safe environment is way more efficient. And it brings as well, in terms of being in an app or being in a secure environment, we can bring rules. So there is settings in some way where it's like ratings. So all the partners will be rated, all the stars will have like some kind of like ID of new standards. So we can really create a new quality of services in there. And this is, yeah, it's very important to me. And I invite every athlete or everyone to actually join the community, not in a way to purchase things or just like to be, I would say, just smarter or because you get educated. No, it's not just a self thing. You have to, as I said, we say about the SEGA project or vision is to get together and be pushing in the same direction, having like a force to create new standards and being together to have like that kind of duty towards people that we can help. Alone, we can do stuff. It is for sure. The sport can help, but it can't do nothing individually. So this is what I think we create a vehicle, Axis Stars, which is able to maybe help on a bigger scale.
Thanks for that summary, Louis. I'll come back to you in a moment. Lots to ask you, including about Black Lives Matter. about Black Lives Matter, which Tessa mentioned, and also Marcus Rashford, and how he's changed the dynamic in terms of what an athlete can do whilst they are still playing. But let's bring in Karen next. A very good afternoon to you. Give me the perspective as regards gender diversity and inclusion, because you were on SEGA's task force specifically focusing on those issues. What conclusions were reached and how much progress are we making? And has that progress been amplified or hampered by the COVID-19 pandemic?
Yeah, thank you so much, Ben. And thank you for this invitation to be on this very esteemed panel. And I'm going to look at my proverbial wristwatch to say, I don't think we have enough time to even discuss all of that. But what I will comment on is that our task force has been diving into all of these topics and we have made some headway. But what we do recognise is that we have so much work yet to do with respect to women. And, you know, I can't speak on behalf of all women. I am a white woman, very privileged, and I am a person who uses a wheelchair. Disability is not a monolith. And that is something that we are bringing forward actively. We are diverse, we are intersectional. There are so many different representations of disability in sports, specific to women. I know that my own personal platform is to elevate disabled women who are participating in sport into leadership positions. And that is incredibly important to me and to the organisation that I work with, that's like Shore Foundation, located in Birmingham, Alabama. SEGA is doing unique things. We have a youth council, which has also inspired our own organisation to create a youth council. And just like she said, we have to build on what we have done as athletes and continue to move forward with these very large platforms and make, make these concepts digestible to people who may have never or cannot understand our experiences, just like Louise just, just said, and appreciate those comments was very much, to bring in the disability perspective into these platforms. Because, you know, it takes all of us to understand all of these differences. Because if we don't have this level of empathy and compassion, how do we make steps? Or how do we create policies to, to move forward? You know, one of the biggest things right now that's happening specifically in our country and globally is the learning piece. And more specifically for white people, the unlearning. And it is our job, it is our job to do this actively. And that's how we're going to move things forward. And it is really a privilege to be on, on the task force because there's so much diversity represented. Our chair, Brian Lewis, I mean, has done incredible job and keeps the Black Lives Matter movement forward with all aspects within sport. I mean, I could, I could talk for days about this subject. So appreciate the introduction to it.
Yeah, really. Like you say, it could be a whole topic and panel in its own entity. And what we might do is come to you over the coming months and get a column specifically to clarify some of those thoughts. But I want to bring in Ben as well, who's been waiting very patiently. And we're obviously going to be talking with you about the optimisation hub and specifically mental health. And as you can see behind you on the screen, that R word, resilience. Ben, I suppose, one backhanded benefit in inverted commas of the pandemic is it's further taught us or emphasised the importance of mental fitness and how it should always be prioritised and put up there in the sporting world, at least alongside physical fitness.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's something often I think we can all take for granted at times. And the, the physical is, is something often that's easier to be seen and you can see the gains from it. But certainly, you know, there's been a lot of awareness that has come about prior to the pandemic. And the pandemic's exploded it both in sport and in society in general. And the idea being is we, you know, we, we really want to understand that it's, it's not an illness. It's just we want to be working on, on that mental side of, of our lives and focusing ourselves, you know. Louis talked about earlier about how we're creating plans for the future. Part of the mentalness is creating a plan for yourself as a being and being able to, to write it down and give yourself direction and focus. And, you know, as, as athletes, often, often we, we have, we have strong mindsets within our sports, but often outside of it, that can be a different mindset. And we've got to try and put the whole piece together so that we, we are the, we are that whole individual that's going to be beneficial for every environment that we, we work in. And certainly, we've, we've seen a lot of it through the optimisation hub, through all the, all the different levels from elite and youth down. And just the ability to stay connected during this part, this time has been so important for particularly young kids who haven't had that connection and really need it. And we've seen how just being able to get online and communicate is, is just boosted their mental health and their resilience. And then with athletes, we take that a step further. So it is, it is important and it does come down to education and having the right tools, which we, we do have, but it's highlighting and being aware of it that's really supportive.
Thank you for that overview, Ben. So let's dive into some debate now and our panelists will be able to bounce off each other. We've got some more questions as well from our SEGA Youth Council members. Louis, I want to come to you first and talk specifically about Marcus Rashford, because it's a wonderful and an inspiring example of an athlete during his playing career at a massive club where he's busy and also still has to be focused on his football, who has almost at times, single-handedly taken it upon himself to inspire a nation to, at times, take on a government and actually facilitate meaningful change. And he's writing a kid's book as well, just a boot, which is incredible. And he's still only twenty-three years of age. How much of a precedent do you think the Marcus Rashford example will set to other current athletes to start doing things outside of football that are meaningful whilst they're still playing?
It's, yeah, it's an, it's an achievement. Believe, believe me, I'm, I'm very, very admirative about his work. And it's easy to say, everybody can, can notice how wonderful his actions are doing. And it's, it's amazing. What I'm trying to actually highlight here is because he's twenty-three, he obviously had maybe a bit more time, let's say, because of the pandemic. But it's a young lad during his career, having like a lot of pressure, playing for England, playing for a big club that it's a massive attraction to any papers. And he has been smart enough and courageous enough to actually go out there and say, listen, I'm going to actually defend those people. I'm going to actually be on the spotlight because people like, whatever you say, you do something good or bad, people will comment. You know, they will find a way to say something bad about you and to highlight something, to actually contradict what you're doing, even if it's good. That people are, let's say, some part of the, the media sometimes use it as a, as a window to highlight what they're doing. So he has been courageous. And the second thing that is very important to highlight is being authentic. So there is not a campaign for Marcus Rashford to win fans or do that for likes or something like this. He's been himself. And this is what is very important that athletes understand. Nobody should be afraid to be themselves. And I've been this way. I've been during my career, I would say, oh, I was like maybe a bit shy, maybe a bit like conservative in some way, because I was aware of this repercussion. And I think Rashford has done really well to actually educate himself, partner with the right people behind, because I'm sure that he's been really well advised to do that. And to have that consistency as well. This is all those three words that is very important to highlight. And this is what I think athletes need to really understand. They need to be educated, they need to be supported correctly, and they need to be authentic to do that. Because otherwise you have backlash. So those are really important to actually address with a step-by-step, let's say, I would say, strategy. It's not easy when you're a football player, and especially you play for England, you have already some pressure as an athlete. But doing those things, because there is people's lives behind all those words, all those letters. This is very important. Sometimes you have to actually explode your bubble, because every agent or advisers are here to protect you. So they don't allow you to go outside. He actually said, I want to do that. I want to actually help those people and families that's suffering even more during that time. So that's, that's very important that we as a unit, as athletes, can start to follow his roots. Because like this is not the only one. It's not going to be the only spot, you know, people are going to say, oh, yes, look at what Marcus Rashford. It's very important that people organise in a group, some in some way, individually in some way, but to actually get that kind of protection. Because now the press are going to say, oh, look at what they're doing. There is a group of hundred people doing it now, a thousand people are doing it, thousand. Imagine the power we can, as like, all together, overpass all the politic, I'm sorry for the language, bullshit. I'm saying it, you know, all those, oh, yes, I'm gonna want to be elected and all those things. So sometimes they say no to an opposition because just by principle, they can't go forward to a project, which is as proved that is really good. So all those athletes have the power to, like, like, I would say, be stronger than any politician, if there is authenticity of the right causes. So I'm very, very fortunate that he actually highlighted that on a bigger scale, because he's Rashford, he's not like someone who is like, he's going to struggle, he's got ten million followers or something like this, he's very helpful.
Is it difficult though, Louis, to balance your own individual agenda, especially when you're trying to do something outside of football with the club's own brand? I guess I'm wondering if, when you were at Manchester United, you wanted to do something that was significant, but nothing to do with Manchester United, whether Sir Alex Ferguson and the Manchester United brand, even if it was a very positive move, might have at that time historically stepped in a bit more and said, no, stay within the club brand, rather than break free as an individual?
There is, there is no such a thing. And in a way that you're going to be advised to not do this or not do that. I don't think so. It's obviously, the, the main thing is in terms of brain protection, the club will obviously advise you, if you cross the line, you do something stupid, they will tell you. But what is very important in this manner is like to change the mentality of organisation. They have to understand that those, like now, players have like, let's. Hello?
You're still there, Louis?
Okay, sorry, I've got a call coming on the same time. So there is like a very important situation where the actual organisation need to really organise and understand that they need to change the mentality. Because those players now have more followers, have more influence than the club. This is what's happening. So they, they really need to go along with this. And I think the example of Rashford again, they actually benefit from it. I'm sure there is like a lot of sponsors who want to affiliate themselves with the club or with Rashford because of what is done. So they have to have like an understanding of what is really, how they're possible to actually support and do. And, and, and this is very important. The, the actual beings, this is what I'm going to say as well, I should advise to every sponsors or organisation to not accept any deal from a commercial company that stop them to do good things in the world. Because whatever the aspect, I've seen something with Liverpool and Manchester being together, they are competitors on the field, but they've been together doing a campaign. I thought that was brilliant. This is what we, we need to see. Integrity is about leadership. Those guys need to do it.
Yeah, absolutely, Louis. Let's bring in Ben, either on Marcus Rashford or more broadly, translate that example into the world of rugby. How can we ensure that current athletes are not only promoting integrity in a positive light, but utilising their own platforms like Rashford has done in a way that sends not just a positive message, but encourages other people, like a domino effect, to follow suit. So it's one thing Rashford ensuring he wins a battle against the government and gets a free school meals programme. But at the same time, he's improving people's mental health as well, because they're not hungry, so they're not as down, so they've got hope from an idol. So everybody is not just fed, but mentally healthier at the same time. And for me, anyway, that's what makes it so incredible. But I'd love to know your thoughts.
I think it's fantastic. If we take Marcus as an example, I think on the other side of it, as athletes, something that can make us struggle sometimes within the, within the mental health spaces, is you become very one-dimensional, you become ultimately very focused on your performance and everything goes towards that performance. I think what's great about what Marcus has done here is he's got that awareness that he's, he's got the one side under control, but he's just adding to it. And, and, and actually that will support his performance on the field. And he's using, he's using it positively, obviously, as we've highlighted, to, to support really good causes. And I think, you know, as athletes, where, where we can, where we can, where we can learn from it is to be from an onboarding process for youngsters coming into sport and through it is to educate them in these areas, to help them understand and build good core beliefs and good values that they can go on and be, be strong in their own personal identity, use their platforms in the right way, in which we see Marcus doing it. I think if, if we do that, it's not for self-gain, it's for, it is genuinely to be able to support and make statements where change can happen. And that's, that's what we really want to see. We, you know, there's a lot going on in the world. And if you can make two or three people happier, then you, in a day, you, you've done, you've done something great. And I think someone like Marcus is our examples highlighted here. And there's, there's, you know, in rugby, in my sport, there's a lot of people championing now the mental health space by one, telling their story and being aware, but then showing how they've educated themselves on how actually misguided they've got themselves, but now they've got themselves on track and they're making a difference for everybody else. So I think utilizing these platforms and social media is, you know, obviously a huge platform now, in the right way, is such a positive exposure for us as athletes.
So we're at half time. Make sure that you get involved. SEGA Champions is the hashtag if you have any questions for us. And we've also got on hand from all around the world, a series of our SEGA Youth Council global members who are dialing in and asking questions. So at the halfway point of our first panel, I'm going to go to Germany now and bring in the vice chair of the SEGA Youth Council, who is Anton Klitschewski. And Anton has a question for you, Karen. Let's have a listen.
Hi, my name is Anton Klitschewski. I'm from Germany and I'm currently conducting freelance work in the fields of sport, human rights and sustainability. Apart from that, I'm also the vice chair of the SEGA Youth Council. I have one specific question to one of your panelists, Karen Korp. She is currently in a role at the International Tennis Federation's Athletes Advisory Council. And in this regard, I wanted to ask, what kind of requests do you get on a daily basis? And are they anonymous? Are they even confidential? This would really interest me. Thank you very much in advance.
Anton, danke schön für deine gute Frage und ich beantworte die Frage jetzt. So I just say thank you for your lovely question. I'm going to answer that question right now. Yes, I am on the International Tennis Federation's Player Council and it is comprised of a diverse group of athletes that are active and that are retired. And I was voted on this council a few years back. And we literally get questions daily. Our chair is Ben Weeks in Australia and Lucy Schuker is our vice chair and she's in GB. And it is a very active process. Currently, we're talking, we're having discussions about tournaments. You know, all of our athletes, irrespective of the sport that you're in, all of our athletes, they want to return to competition in some way. And that is almost impossible to do with this global pandemic happening, with travel restrictions and point allocations. Everyone wants to qualify on the high performance and on the Paralympic side for competition, to participate in the Tokyo Games. And so in order to qualify for the Tokyo Games, you have to play tournaments. And what does that look like right now? So to answer the question, we get questions on a daily basis. We meet as a group. Currently, we're meeting as a group literally twice a month and more so on WhatsApp and multiple conversations. So we're trying to address the athlete concerns as they come to us. And again, it's global. We've got travel restrictions, we've got competition restrictions. There's just so much going on up on the tennis front specifically. And we're trying to address that as adequately as we can with limited resources and different time zones as we're all working in. And we're trying to be as proactive in this process as possible. I know that in our national federation, the United States Tennis Association, they have plans on holding the Masters Tournament down in Orlando. And there's just a lot of discussion, but it is a transparent discussion. And I, just to echo what Lewis was talking about and what Ben was talking about, you know, the, the big questions are, who are you as an athlete at your core? When your physicality has been taken, or you cannot compete, or you're not driving your Tesla, or what do you actually represent? And so echoing what Ben's comments- And so echoing what Ben's comments were, literally, you know, establishing the values, who you are as a person without all the stuff. Who, who are you? And then how do you build upon your life and your identity? And then step into your athlete responsibility as an athlete arena? It's so critically important for all of us, especially now. So thank you again.
Yeah, great question. Or that we might get some French in a minute as well, because I'm gonna go to France and we've got a question coming in for Louis in just a moment. But Karen, very briefly, I wanna talk to you about your time in gymnastics. Because I think what we've done in this opening 20 minutes is touched upon Marcus Rashford and campaigning, education of athletes before they're in the sport, when they're in the sport and after they're in the sport. But what we haven't focused on is protection. And unfortunately, we've seen in gymnastics specifically, a number of cases. The one that got the most press was Larry Nassar's case in the United States about when athletes are sexually abused and bullied. From your own time in athletics, did you see any warning signs? And what kind of progress protecting an athlete do you think we're making?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Ben, for the question. I, you know, I see warning signs all the time, even as a 53 year old retired athlete who's very active in committee work and boards dismantling these existing systems. And I think that's the key phrase. We are in the theme of dismantling systems that have been historically created to suppress, oppress and discriminate against multiple different identifiers. And so we're tracking that all the time. You know, here in the United States, we have US Safe Sport. And that's with Jairis Cologne's leadership, we have made incredible strides, not just in gymnastics, but in all sports. What happened on the gymnastics front devastated, absolutely devastating for years to come. Do we see signs? Absolutely. As a woman, I see signs every day. What is our responsibility in this space? So I can address, we recently in the United States passed legislation as a bill, S2330, and that was a congressional bill that was just signed into law. That is literally establishing a commission. The title is Empowering Olympic, Paralympic and Amateur Athletes Act of 2020, which is establishing safeguards to protect amateur athletes from abuse, including sexual abuse by coaches and employees in the United States Olympic and Paralympic sports. And they have or are currently developing a commission. And I'm very pleased that that commission will not only have Olympic athletes, but it will also be comprised of Paralympic athletes. So our voice as disabled athletes will be actively represented in these very important processes going forward. So again, dismantling existing historic antiquated frameworks is at the forefront of these conversations because we must protect our people. And it's not just our youth, it's all of us. It's all of us in every locker room and every boardroom and literally in every conversation. Because so much of this has to do with the gaslighting and the silencing that specifically as a woman, you experience literally on a daily basis.
Karen, thank you for that stuff. Sweet, allons en France. Let's go to France next as promised. Sorry, my French is rubbish, but I hope that made some kind of sense. And we can hear now from another Sigur Youth Council member, Patrick Fomézhu, Max Patrick Fomézhu, who has a question for Louis Sahar.
Hi, I'm Max Patrick Fomézhu, I'm from Cameroon. And I am a former assistant category manager for the Japanese brand Mizuno. My two favourite players when I was young were these two guys behind me, Eto'o and Ronaldinho. Why? Because it was just so wonderful to see them play together for the FC Barcelona at that time. My question will be for Louis Sahar concerning the Black Lives Matter movement. I saw in the US that black players decided to create a coalition for a change. Do you think it could be the same in Europe with black players from all over the world? Creating a coalition for active and real change in all the leagues in Europe? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the question. I think that it's a very good example what happened in the US. Obviously waited such a dramatic events for people to actually come together, put so much pressure on not only the politic, but as well on companies. So like you have seen some big shops or big brands had to change a lot in terms of their recruitment, in terms of whatever they were doing in terms of campaigns, which is, which is great. It has to be done on the, on the worldwide scale. And this organisation, its campaign in terms of marketing that need to really have a vehicle. Have a vehicle for what? For organisation, education? You need to have the right people in there to actually address the message correctly. Because there is so misunderstanding. Those Black Lives Matters campaign could be in some way interpreted saying, some people are gonna say it's violent and some people are gonna say is this is that. You need to have the right narrative to actually counter that. You have to make, make sure that people who are at the front foot of these things are educated, are able to actually communicate correctly. And this need to be organised because as well as like fighting against time, you need to have like a proper campaign, it's like a marketing campaign that makes sense, you know? It's like if you want to actually, you said about dismantling organisation, you really need to have like a proper strategy. And I think this movement is, it should be just a foundation and you just need to go on and on and on. And not only for black people, but after for other people who are, has been suffering from discrimination over the years. So this is really important for me as my community, that we need to educate ourselves. Because let's say seven or eight months ago, I wasn't aware of the history of like many, many stuff. I wasn't, I was like maybe living in my ball bowling somewhere. And it was really helpful than some other players like Quinton Fortune or Rio Ferdinand or all the players that I know and I trust actually helped me to understand what happened, what is gonna happen next. And this is need to be done on a very private way, on a bigger scale. It's gonna be on public, but it's gonna be organised. So I will always advise everybody to come together to actually educate ourselves. Because history need to be changed by having like a proper education.
Louis, we'd be remiss if we don't touch a little further on Black Lives Matter. Before I turn to Ben, we've got a question for you as well. How do you think the movement has benefited football? Now, of course, we're seeing players in the men and women's game globally kneeling like Colin Kaepernick did in American football before matches. What message does that send? And as an athlete, what's your advice to those on the field in the moment that do suffer racial abuse? I know there's FIFA and league protocol about reporting it. I know there's lots of advice out there as to how to follow it. But what's your take? Would you walk off? Would you tell the official? Would you say nothing until after the game? What do you think personally, as opposed to what the rules say is the best approach? Over to you, Louis.
Oh, is that me? Sorry, I thought it was Ben. Okay, I just like think that in those position, when you have like a situation that comes from a very, I would say authentic moments is like, it's like you cut like at the moment, you have your own reaction, you are a human being, you could be like walking off, it's your decision. You have to explain then why. You have to actually like have like a proper narrative to explain the reason you make that gesture. Because as a human being, you could be like really, really upset about this moment in time. So this is really up to, to somebody, an individual. I always like advise people to calm down and make sure that they really take those actions very carefully. They may say or talk to the captain, talk to the referee, talk to anyone who can help them to take the decision all together and saying, listen, I didn't take it alone. But at some point, action needs to be done. And this is where, as I said, it's always better to be all together and has to be like a pack to actually take a decision like this because it will have more power. But I always like have like a massive respect for the fans. We've seen it today, how much is like really, really hard to play without fans. So I won't, I won't be like habit to actually disrespect the ones who actually pay for their tickets. I actually love their games and respect every, every players. Because like 10, maybe five idiots has done something to me. I will always like look at pragmatic way to actually solve these things, but this is personal. Some has done totally different reaction, but I respect because it's not easy. It's very, it's very personal. It's like you insult my mother or my rest, I will, I will snap and have like my rights to actually have a certain kind of reaction, irrational reaction. People may not understand, I don't really care. It's just like I will explain because it's up to me. I will think that I always advise people to actually really be careful about it, but it's really very difficult. What I'm gonna actually ask then is the clubs to protect me? Is to have like a sanction to be done, but a proper one, not a thousand pound for a club or an organisation, that doesn't, that doesn't work, doesn't add up. It needs to be like big enough for people to realise that they have no place for it. There is no, no ground for such things, no more. Yeah, maybe back in the days they accept, but now it's done. We have like not accepting those things anymore. And this is what organisation need to really know. They can't say, that's why we heard, like I heard our French president of federation, I've said that always gonna be this way or something like this, like, like accepting the statue call. You know, it's like, it's normal, it's okay, or it's not, it's not that strong in sport. Doesn't matter. You have to fight it as much as anybody else because your, your people can see it a million times more than anybody on a, on a, on a job because it's very idling. But on, on, on the, on the field where everybody is watching TV, this is very impactful. We need to educate people and this is a very, a very important place for that, you know? So they really have to understand the impact that they have when they take those decisions.
And Ben, within the Black Lives Matters movement, but more broadly with any movement and change within sport, even when it's led by athletes, you need an element of organisation. And Cheal Warner's has been in touch with a question about how best athletes can organise themselves to get maximum impact. Because I think it's obvious, isn't it, that the best change is gonna come through scale and mass support? You can do that in retrospect after something's out there with things like the media or kneeling during a football match. But how in the heat of playing, do you organise yourself collectively as a group to begin with?
Yeah, I mean, in the heat of playing, again, it comes back down to you as a group. I think one thing we've, we've, that really highlights within a group is the culture within your team, which is really important. And if the culture within the team is solid in terms of where the integrity sits and where every, where everybody's understood, then it's the team coming together and buying into that culture and, and allowing it not to, not to happen. And if it's in the heat of the battle, that's what it, that's when it comes to the fore. And everybody can get around each other and support each other in the regards to not allowing it to have an effect. And if you're in, obviously if you're in the middle of a game, that you can park it, that you've got the support of your teammates and that you can finish a game and then everybody there can, can deal with it post the game with the support of each other. And it's, it's about, yeah, individuals being able to be strengthened by the team and the community and the culture that they have around them in that aspect. Yeah.
Yeah, Louis, I think that we're seeing, aren't we, in football in particular, a little bit more of a movement towards logistical organisation. Emmy Oheskey and Stiliy and Petrov have started a players' organisation. At FIFA Pro, there's the Global Player Council. There's already within England, existing organisations like the PFA. How therefore, when you then add Axis Stars and other independent ventures, do you balance all the different voices and all the different organisations? Some new, some old, some official, some unofficial? Each of them, when you look at what they stand for, seems positive in terms of promoting integrity. But it does create a lot of competing voices, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. I think that it's a good point. The main, like, let's say, the main, the main things about it is like, it's a voice. And where those voices are going to actually have a nice impact, this is the main thing. I will always think that towards the message that we have, it's controlled, it's like, it's educated and it has to be consistent. Again, this is what I'm thinking all the time. I'm not seeing, I look at the competition and I'm gonna actually like try to, to stop the message or something like this because that's not what I want to do. My, my vision is clear. I want to actually get my experience. I've started a project like it's six years now. So we have like really a very good understanding of exactly what we want. And anyone who could help, we're gonna partner because this is the actual name of the game is like saying integrity. If you say integrity, we have to actually be a collective. It's like we collect ideas, we help each other, we try to partner with each other. And this is what I think is being not done correctly over the years. All those like big groups who have like gained power, they don't work with anybody else. They do exclusivity deals, they make sure that they get, I say, get funded in a certain way and they get complacent, you know, they're happy with their roles, they're happy with what they do. They actually deliver some information and they say, oh, now it's up to the players to actually understand. No, doesn't work this way. You have to go along with a technology, you have to go along with maybe challenges that comes from not in your camp. Because, oh, actually it brings something that I didn't thought about. And this is how we're gonna go forward. May, may in how we can, I could have like something wrong, we could have something wrong. But it's, it's the same motion, the dynamic. And this is what is important. I think all those, the player for player or whoever are coming with ideas, it's very welcome.
We've got a few minutes left and I'm gonna get your closing thoughts in a moment. We've had other questions from us to youth council members. And what we'll do is put them to our panelists off air and provide you with answers over the coming weeks. But Karen, I wanna focus specifically on integrity within disability sports. Because I've always felt like there's a big market in Paralympic sport for wrongdoing that's not necessarily being as addressed as in other sports. One of the reasons is because with any emerging sport, as it develops onto the main stage, of course, it's susceptible to things like match fixing and bribery. And then Paralympic athletes obviously go through various testings as well to get their classifications and their scorings before they play in a Paralympic game. And there's ways, so I'm told anyway, of orchestrating that testing to get the best possible handicap, which is also a way of almost doping using the classifications within Paralympic sports. Do you agree with some of what I've just said? And does more need to be done to clamp down on a lack of integrity specifically within Paralympic sport?
Yeah, unequivocally, the answer is yes. I wouldn't even necessarily say more has to be done. It has, what's happening right now has to be done consistently and it has to be done sustainably. There has to be the continuum of a strategic plan that implements sanctions when infractions happen. As an athlete, you know, when you're thinking about your own personal identity or integrity, going back to what Louise and Ben talked about earlier is, again, what are your personal values? What, what are you thinking about sports? What are you thinking about your life? You're more than just an athlete when, when you're on the proverbial field of play. The IPC, the International Paralympic Committee is doing a tremendous job creating research paradigms to, to figure out where are the gaps? Where can we do better? And all of the national governing organisations around sport are gonna follow suit, according to the IOC, the International Olympic Committee and the IPC. You know, our international frameworks, do they need work? Absolutely. But when we're looking at in a global framework, there are so many countries that don't even have representation. So in our country, we have ISADA and on the global front, we have WADA. And there are very, very specific rules around drug use or non-drug use. I mean, we as athletes, I mean, even in my retirement, I know what those rules are. And it is my job to bring that forward to other athletes. I mean, they are very, very specific. And if you choose as an athlete to cross that line well, then you will be sanctioned. There will be infractions, there will be. then you will be sanctioned, there will be infractions, there will be, there will be a suspension. And we're going to see that happening more, more often than not. And there's, there's just a lot going on because again, our movement is still young. The Olympic and Paralympic movement, when we just became inclusive, you know, just within our own country, within our name. I mean, there's so much work to be done with respect to parity, um, representation of athletes on all governing boards. I think there are so many organisations here that are doing great jobs with that. Like Steve Messler, who's the CEO of an organisation called Classroom Champions. I mean, how do we continue to educate our, our young adults, our adults and our athletes? What is, what does integrity mean to you? I mean, sometimes it, it's like, what does equity mean to you? Everyone seems to have a different definition of what that, what that is. And going back to the, the previous conversation about what Louise just addressed, you know, we really need to take a look at having a lot of uncomfortable conversations. There are people in our communities that are dying because they're black. So those of us who have the lane, we have to bring forward very uncomfortable messages. Because, but my discomfort does not equate to someone's death and that level of violence. We need to mobilise. And just like Louise said, there, there is a collective that needs to be creative. And that's how we create this collective liberation for all of our people, all of our siblings. But, you know, we have a lot of work to do and just grateful to SEGA for bringing forward the task force and these panels and these conversations. So we can continue to address them as they come forward. It is difficult work, but it requires that authenticity, transparency and integrity.
Absolutely. And Karen, that's a great way to finish. So thank you to you and also to Louis as well for your closing thoughts. And Ben, I'm going to give the final word to you. Where does SEGA fit into all of this? Why is it important for you to affiliate yourself and the work you do at the optimisation hub with an organisation like the Sport Integrity Global Alliance?
I mean, in, in a nutshell, for everything that has been said, it is, it is the collective and it's the bringing together of, of like-minded people. And it's created a fantastic platform in which we can be a part of and support in, in, in this movement within, with integrity and making sure that, you know, sport really does uphold the integrity and become a really positive influence, uh, in, in society, in the communities. And no bigger time than now when we start to hopefully come out the back of, um, a pandemic like we are, that we can really use it as a, as a positive way of bringing people back to, back together and, 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 and building it off of those values and integrity. So I think what SEGA is doing is, is fantastic. And it's brought together some really powerful people that we want to align ourselves with to be able to support that message.
Great stuff. Ben, thank you very much indeed. And again, to Louis, check out Axis Stars, to Karen and to Tessa from earlier. We could continue this all day, but that is the end of our first panel. Thank you for your questions and to our SEGA youth members as well for getting involved. I'll read out some comments a little bit later, but we'll move swiftly on in just a moment to our second webinar. I'll introduce the panelists in just a moment. But as we take half time on the day at large here for our SEGA Champions special, we're going to hear some messages from those who couldn't be with us. We'll get the perspective of MotoGP through Miguel Oliveira. We will also hear from Rosa Motta as well, a gold medallist at Seoul 1988. And the Real Madrid and Spain legend Emilio Butragueno is also part of our next segment. Here are three special messages for you to have a listen to whilst you grab a cup of tea. And we'll be back in about five minutes with our second panel.
Hello, everyone. My name is Miguel Oliveira and I'm currently a MotoGP rider, riding in a MotoGP World Championship. As a MotoGP rider, it is very important to pass a message of integrity in my sport. Integrity, it is a value that is based way beyond just passing a good image. It is a value that we take on sportive attitude in our sport, but also in our personal lives. So what we learn in sports can be applied in every area of our life and to everyone. So as sports ambassadors, we have a very important role to get this message across everyone around the world. So keep fighting, keep a positive mindset and see you soon.
I love this game since I was a child. I'm playing for Real Madrid, my lifelong club, was a dream come true. Football is a wonderful sport. It plays every important social activity because it brings people together. Fans join around a common feeling towards their team. Needless to say, creating a very powerful experience. Additionally, it's able to build bridges in our society and reinforce relationships. Football is a unique source of inspiration and a profound learning experience based on specific values. Values determine our life and shape our personality. As a Real Madrid football player, I learned some of them that have helped me tremendously ever since. Values such as respect, teamwork and a never say die attitude are deeply present in my daily life and are very important for me. We all agree that the sport can change many people's lives. We have a wonderful example with the Real Madrid Foundation. It covers out social sport projects to help those who are in need, mainly boys and girls at risk of exclusion. We are present in more than 100 countries with more than 1,000 social sport projects and 100,000 people take part in our activities. We use football and basketball as a marvelous tools of education, integration and cooperation. Solidity is essential and much more so in these difficult times we are going through. Many people have passed away because of the pandemic and we would like to pay tribute to all of them. At the same time, a lot of families are struggling and we like to send them our support. And of course, we must express our heartfelt gratitude to those who have been fighting the pandemic since the very first day, even at risk of their lives. We are deeply grateful to all of them. Real Madrid is fully aware of our role in society. As soon as the pandemic broke out, we started to team up with the political and health authorities. The Santiago Bernabeu Stadium was used as a storage and sanitary distribution hub. And the Real Madrid Foundation intensified its activities to help people. We tried to put all our resources in the service of the people. We are facing an unprecedented situation. We are entirely convinced that the best way to fight the pandemic is through our actions. We must apply our responsibility and prudence in the hope that together we will overcome these challenging times. Thank you very much.
Hello and welcome back to our SEGA Champions afternoon of star-studded athletes talking in those video testimonials. As you just heard, our opening panel has taken place. It will be available in due course on our socials and also on YouTube as well. We heard from the likes of Louis Saha about Axis Stars, Tessa Sanderson, Ben Gollings and Karen Corb. And those video testimonials just a moment ago, the Real Madrid legend Emilio Butragueno, Ross Motta and Miguel Oliveira from the world of MotoGP and athletics respectively. We move on to our second webinar now. And as per the first one, we've got some star-studded names to introduce you to. We'll have Stacey Copeland, hopefully in just a moment. She's a SEGA champion and the first British woman to win the Commonwealth title for boxing. Cameron Myler is also part of this panel, also a SEGA champion and a four-time Olympian in Lille, a clinical assistant professor as well at New York University's Tisch Institute for Global Sport and also an arbitrator at the Court of Arbitration for Sport. That is quite an impressive CV. And we have Florence Williams, the WASP's ladies fly half playing in the Allianz Premier Fifteens. She's scored over 150 points at WASPs. And to complete the panel, we can also introduce Oda Fulutidulu. Hopefully, I've got the surname somewhere near accurate and she is a FIFA Women's World Cup 2019 player for South Africa. Oda, let me turn to you first and say a very good afternoon. And you can clarify, no doubt, the correct pronunciation of the surname. Score me out of 10.
It was very close. I would say seven.
Okay, seven is respectable, not too embarrassing, is it? So let me turn to you first and get some opening remarks. You're obviously a professional footballer. You've played in a FIFA Women's World Cup. Talk to me about the lay of the land as regards integrity. I suppose for you, it's about opportunity, equality and respect and ensuring that you get each of those three things. And as a consequence, you can do what you do best, which is play football.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, definitely. First of all, OD said, uh, full name is pronounced Fulutidulu. It is, um, it gets butchered all the time, but I'm so used to it that when someone does get it right is, uh, it's, I feel like doing the, the backflip or something like that. But yeah, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a former child refugee from DRC Congo, uh, grew up in South Africa, which is my adopted country. Yes, I've had the honour of representing my adopted country, South Africa, at the FIFA Women's World Cup, which is obviously the biggest tournament in the world. Um, you know, being given that chance to be exposed, it was an absolute honour. Um, given that, you know, coming from Africa, we as female soccer players in Africa, we don't get the, the exposure that most of the other, um, uh, female soccer players around the world in Europe or in, um, on the, on the Americas get. So, um, so the FIFA Women's World Cup, you know, when you make it, it's about this, as big a stage as you can get. And it's about the most exposure any African player will ever get. So to be able to be at that platform was an absolute honour. And it was, you know, to do it, uh, you know, like you said, to do it with integrity and to do it, um, you know, with clear conscience and, um, to play cleanly. Which is, you know, it's, it's, it should be every single footballer's aim to do that. Uh, I also represent, um, Mission 89, uh, um, organisation, uh, which is a organisation is against, uh, a fight against, uh, human trafficking to expose and bring and bring and to highlight, you know, that area of the sport that is being exploited, that not many people are fully aware of. So we, we look to, the organisation look to bring, uh, to bring light into those situations and to educate not just the players, but also the parents of the players and just the general public that these situations are taking place and they do happen. And we just look to, uh, to bring more light into the organisation and into that, 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 that can, that work that happens on the ground. And it sometimes happened in daylight, but people are not fully aware of. So, so that is the organisation that I am truly passionate about and I'm really honoured to be a part of.
Thank you very much for that introduction and clarification on how to pronounce the surname. I'm not going to have another go at it. I might just refer to it by your first initials on first name and surname. You certainly raised some really interesting and very important points. And I want to bring in Cameron Myler now to get the perspective, perhaps specifically to start with Cameron, of your role as an arbitrator with the Court of Arbitration for Sport. What kind of integrity-based cases might you hear at CAS? And how can CAS, as an organisation and you as an arbitrator, promote integrity both in a law court, but also outside of it?
Thanks, Ben. And thanks to SEGA for having us here today. Uh, and, and Ben, I actually have to just correct you on the pronunciation of my sport, which is luge. So on that, on that note, um, so at, at the, at the Court of Arbitration for Sport, CAS hears a variety of cases, including doping, eligibility, a lot of commercial cases related to football. And I am currently on the anti-doping division, so I am hearing specifically doping-related cases. I was at the Olympics in 2018 in Pyeongchang as one of the six arbitrators there. And, uh, there were about 3,000 tests conducted in, uh, in, in South Korea and only five positive tests. So I heard one of those. And I, I'll point out though, with the, with the five positive tests, two of those were by Olympic athletes from Russia. And as, as we know, Russia as a country was not, you know, participating in, uh, in the Olympics, not allowed to participate, uh, in the Olympics in, uh, in Pyeongchang. So as a, as an arbitrator, you know, my role is to be, uh, is to be neutral, uh, to hear all of the facts and with my, uh, other arbitrators, if there are three on a panel, uh, to make a decision that is consistent with the, with the rules and the, and the facts that we've heard. Um, as a, I'm going to speak a little more, maybe a little more broadly, I think as a, as an athlete, uh, I think we all have an opportunity with our, you know, with our platforms, whether we competed in the FIFA World Cup, amazing, or at the Olympic Games or in any other competition. I think we all have a platform, uh, to use to do some good in, in the world. And, uh, and, and some of that may come from, you know, participation in the governance of our respective sports organisations. So, uh, one thing I did when I was an athlete was to serve on the Athletes Advisory Council of the US Olympic and Paralympic Committee. And I was also on the board of directors. So, uh, as, I think it's really important as an athlete to, uh, to be actively involved to the extent that you can, because the, the athlete voice is really, uh, important. And of course, central to decisions that organisations should be making. So, uh, so I, I think it's, uh, you know, and not, not every athlete will do it necessarily, but I think we all have an opportunity to, uh, to make a significant and positive change in our respective organisations.
Thank you for that overview. Fascinating as well. So much that we could pick up upon, but I want to bring Flo in as well. That one, easy to pronounce, impossible, but even if you know the full name of Florence, you're playing for WASPs. Now, in rugby, we have seen scandal in the men's game. We all know about Bloodgate. We all know about the relegation of Saracens. How do you think as a player, whilst you're still playing, you can promote integrity and when necessary whistleblow?
Oh, yeah. Firstly, it's actually a silent F on the, no, I'm joking. Um, so, uh, yeah, with integrity as a player, it's like standing up for what you're believing and not being afraid to put your hand up when you need to. And I think as female athletes, we actually are very good at that because we're constantly asking for integrity from our governing bodies and from society. So to not show it ourselves is kind of shooting it ourselves in the foot. And I think unfortunately, some, in some cases as females, we are, we are very honest and we don't like to break the rules and we like to do what we're told. And so generally this does come across in our sport. And I think the, um, the winner at all costs nature in the men's game, which does lead to bending the rules and trying to get things done without it being seen, isn't necessarily at the highest pressure and the highest levels in the women's game. So integrity is not impacted by the, we need to win, we're going to do it by breaking the rules. So I think integrity from a cheating, rule-breaking point of view in women's sport, it's not quite, um, comparable to the men's game at this point.
Is it difficult for you though, because the team comes first, if you see somebody bending the rules? Or of course, if we're not even talking about cheating, we're talking about insults, bullying, a lack of gender equality, racism. Is it hard, especially when you're on the field, so you're focused on trying to win, to undermine a teammate, to report a teammate or to call out somebody who you're playing against because of any factor? When ultimately, first and foremost, your coaches are telling you, get on with it and deal with anything not relevant to winning afterwards?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, it, it is very difficult as a player when your focus is to be an athlete and then someone questions your integrity and suddenly your morals are questioned. And for example, when you're going out and you've got, um, a female referee, for example, and people are saying, oh, well, she can't do her job as well because she's a female or, oh, we've got her. Or, oh, we've got her again, and it's about the gender rather than the quality of the referee. And suddenly I'm thinking, okay, why are we even talking about this? And then in the same mind, you've got to concentrate on your game and your game and what you're trying to execute. And when your integrity gets questioned, it takes your eye off of the ball. And I think it's something that in sport, we should be looking beyond and learning from our sport. That everyone is equal and we should be treating each other as equal. And why should we be, should we be bringing race or gender or ways to win that aren't fair into our sport? When we should be focusing on the whole reason that we're there in the first place?
Odo, I want to bring you in to get the unique perspective of a refugee. What extra challenges does a refugee face when trying to settle and ultimately then get into sport? And you can talk from personal experience or more broadly. And the reason I ask this is because I'm going to come on once I've got the first bit of context to a specific example relating to the Afghan Women's National Team, where one of the refugees outside of Afghanistan settled in Scandinavia and brought a case against the head of the Afghan FA for sexual abuse against a variety of players. And she can't now, her name is Khalida Popple, set foot back in Afghanistan. And that was a case that ended up going on appeal to the Court of Arbitration for Sport. And we can delve into that with Cameron. But before we do that, set the context for me. What challenges did you or any other refugee face in trying to first settle and then make it in professional sport?
Well, there, there are quite a lot of challenges. My biggest one, just, just even just before going professional, just even just, just, just trying to play like a normal league game in South Africa. My biggest challenges growing up was having, my paperwork being accepted as legitimate paperwork to be able to, to play legitimately, just a local game. I had, I had refugee paperwork that had to be renewed every three months. So the South African Football Governing Body, to register for, for, to play in a league, you needed an ID or a passport. And as a refugee, I had neither one of those. I only had a refugee paper, so that it not see that as a legitimate document for me to be able to play just, just as a teenager in the local league. So I had that problem every single season. And I always had to miss the first, the first couple of months of, of the league because, because the paperwork would always be rejected. And in order for me to be, for it to be accepted, I had to go all the way up to the highest point of the, of the Football Federation Governing Body to, for them to be able to, to, to accept my paperwork. So, so, and, and I've come across quite a few refugees that have, that has had the same, the same kind of challenges in terms of just, just, not even just wanting to play pro, but just wanting to play a normal league game, to be able to play football that they love in a, in a legitimate league. They experienced those same challenges in terms of like their documents, their refugee documents that they have to be seen as a legitimate paperwork. And then secondly, in terms of to going from that into a pro level, it is just, just the, the host, it makes it very difficult for a non-European player to play in Europe. Just the paperwork is just so much more difficult. So therefore, most European clubs don't sign a lot, sign a lot of African players because of all the extra paperwork that comes with it and, and the extra finances. For the men, it's not always, it's not always a problem because they have the finances, you know, and they have the legal, the legal experiment and expertise in terms of how to deal with those things. But the women, the clubs, most, most clubs in Europe don't always have the kind of money to be able to go the extra mile to sign an African player that doesn't have a European passport. So, so those situations, not just for refugees, just for Africans, also in general, makes, makes it much harder for females to, to come and play in higher levels due to the, you know, just the club financial, clubs, most clubs don't have the financial backing to be able to afford a non-European player.
Yeah, really interesting. And Cameron, I was referencing earlier that the refugee from Afghanistan, Khalida Popple, started a case against the head of her FA for sexual abuse. He was banned for life by FIFA. He went to the Court of Arbitration for Sport to appeal that. He lost, he's still banned for life, but he hasn't been arrested in Afghanistan. He hasn't been tried for rape or any other charges. Now, in this particular context, you have a passionate activist refugee who's managed to levy support and funding from FIFA Pro and from other organisations. But in many cases, it can be quite daunting, can't it, for an athlete? Especially if they feel alone and they haven't spoken that publicly about a particular issue, to know how they whistleblow and then potentially, if they've been dismissed, if they've been bullied, if they've been abused, how they can get legal justice? So how do you think, even though the Court of Arbitration for Sport is an appeals court, how do you think athletes and maybe even refugees specifically can get the correct legal advice and support to start and pursue a case from start to finish, when they may not have the financial means or the support around them?
Well, I think there are so many questions and really good questions in what, what you just said, Ben. So, so a couple of things. One, just kind of a reminder that, you know, sport is self-regulated. So every organisation gets to, gets to make its own rules. And, and, and so like the example that, that you just gave, the person who, the sexual abuser, so banned for life under the rules of the, of the FA. But that doesn't necessarily then mean that there would, you know, automatically be a legal case. So, and, and the legal remedies available are going to, of course, vary from country to country. So there may be both a civil case that could be brought. So the athlete could sue the individual who caused them harm under, you know, various legal theories. And then there could also be a criminal proceeding against the, against the individual. So on the, on the criminal side of things, usually that's the, that's like in the, it would be the state or the country that would choose to bring the charges against an individual. That's not something you, as a, you know, as a player, as an athlete or any other individual can start on your own. A civil proceeding, yes, you definitely can start that on your own. But I, you know, I litigated for 10 years before I started teaching at NYU. And litigation is really expensive. So it can, as you said, be something that is beyond the reach of, of many athletes. And, and I'll say that arbitration can be as well, because even though, let's say it may not, you may not have to pay fees to CAS in order to bring an arbitration that's doping or otherwise related to like eligibility, you still have to pay your lawyers. So that can be a really big expense. So I think you raise, you know, a really good question. I don't know that there's any sort of one answer to that. CAS, CAS has created something akin to like legal aid. So if you don't have, if you don't have the funds to, to hire a lawyer, CAS can help you, can help provide you with, with assistance. But that doesn't help with the, with respect to what, you know, rights and remedies you might have in, in a court. So, you know, I definitely know a lot of lawyers who make themselves available to, to do pro bono work, to, you know, to help athletes in, in cases where they might not otherwise be able to proceed. But I, I think that, you know, we kind of need something on a, on a worldwide basis that could, you know, that can be, that's known to athletes, that's available to athletes and, and provides them with sort of legal resources and, and help for, you know, the variety of, of issues that come up.
Really useful to know and we'll try and share some of those resources relating to legal aid over the course of the coming days or weeks on our SEGA socials or directly to you if you need them for any reason. You may have noticed that Stacey Copeland has now joined us. I'm going to just let her take a swig of water and have a breather before I introduce her in full. And I'm going to come to Flo again first. In the earlier panel, Flo, we were talking about Marcus Rashford and how he's used his athlete platform to campaign and generate meaningful change. How inspired are you by that? And what do you think you can do with your platform or other athletes? You know, not every athlete is going to have 10 million followers, but every athlete is a role model. Every athlete can show a pathway, every athlete can inspire. So have you personally been inspired by Marcus Rashford? And have you got any ideas of topics, campaigns, areas outside of rugby that you might wish to pursue over the coming months or years?
Yeah, what Marcus Rashford has done has been amazing. And it's been athlete with a platform such as his and using it for good. A lot of athletes can become absorbed within their sport and that is the only voice that they have. But they realise that in sport, you, without being on purpose, you generate a huge following of fans that sport garners huge emotions in people and they will follow you and they will believe whatever you say. And whether it's, I'm playing for Man United or I'm playing for England or I scored a goal, or whether it's the government need to change this, you have an emotional bond with your fans that is like no other. It's not like entertainment stars, it's not like politicians, it's not like other celebrities in sport. The emotional bond is incredibly important. And what the power that athletes have is to then use this emotional bond they have between fans to create campaigns for good. And what Marcus Rashford done, has done is use his platform and his voice in that, that bond that he's got with his fans to, to do something for good. And probably hundreds of people, thousands of people were probably saying the same thing as him. But no one, like you say, had 10 million followers to do it with. And he is, it's an absolute lead by example on his part for what can be done if you actually say something with that platform. And for myself, 10 million followers is slightly, slightly off the mark of mine. I mean, nine and a half, no. But it is inspiring to see that if you stand up for something and you are, you're willing to put yourself out there, it creates, you're saying, a pathway for people to follow. And in women's sport, there are so many stories that happen every single day that if they got the limelight and if they got the following behind it, it would be like, why is this happening? Like similar to the Marcus Rashford thing. And he's saying, why are kids not getting fed during their holidays? Okay, well, why are female athletes giving up seven days a week for free? And then being put in the media as professional athletes? Well, we're not professional, we're not, but I don't think people know that in, in some cases. I know some female athletes are, but in a lot of cases, they're not. And until you have the voice to say that, then how can people follow it? How can people get behind it and how can it become known? I recently put into the limelight the Irish jersey fiasco, where they promoted the jersey and they didn't use the male players and they, they used the male players, sorry, and they didn't use the female players. And then they use models instead. And I just said like, this isn't cool. Like what's the difference between you're launching a jersey? Surely the females should be in their jersey the same way as the men. And again, it's not a conversation that is just happening with me. There's many people saying it and a lot of people got behind it. And it just showed how many people agreed that this wasn't okay. And like, we are more than enough to be in that jersey and why isn't that happening? And because it got that limelight and because it got that coverage, Canterbury changed their brand policy and then they did a huge launch around the women's team. And that's just a really tiny example of standing up for what you're believing and then creating change for it. And I do think at the moment, the power of social media, you don't have to have millions of followers. You don't have to already have a voice. You don't have to be on TV three, four times a week to create change. If you want to create it and you have a point that is worthy, people will get behind it. And you can get thousands of retweets overnight on Twitter and you can get that airtime.
Totally, yeah. And it's a really good example and congratulations on campaigning for that. And I could see whilst you were very lucidly explaining that, Stacey Copeland nodding her head in approval. Stacey has joined us and is the first British woman to win a Commonwealth title for boxing and also a SEGA champion. And Stacey, a very good afternoon. We'll talk about why you became a SEGA champion in a moment. But first, let's get your response to what Flo was talking about. Fighting for gender equality should just be a given. And hopefully one day we won't need to use the E word, equality, because it will just be ever-present and automatic, but we're not there yet. And unfortunately, the pandemic might set us back because a number of women's teams and individual athletes might get less funding. Their very livelihood could be under threat and we might have to build the buzz, build the demand for sponsorship, build the demand for opportunity, equality and respect. Not all over again, but certainly women's sport will be hit hard by COVID-19. What are your thoughts therefore on where we're at with gender equality, which I think is a form in terms of campaigning of integrity? And how can we continue the positive conversation around gender equality, even though we are in the midst of a pandemic?
That was the longest question I've ever been asked in my life. Well, anyway, I'll try and answer what I can remember of it. And I agree with everything that Flo said. And I think obviously I'm really proud of Marcus Rashford because he's from Manchester where I'm from. And so that, that's, that's really happy point for me. And it's just shows what a great city it is. But it also shows the importance of diversity and leadership because it's a leadership role that Marcus has taken on. And if you don't have people in positions of power, whether that's influence on the sporting field or in governance or decision-making, who haven't got a variety of lived experiences, how can they represent other people? And the thing is about Marcus is that he has been there. He's not just advocating for it, he's been that child who went to bed hungry at night, which is, and it's rare that you get to see people reaching that level and having that voice who've been there. That's why it's so important for people who've had various experiences, just like those on this panel, who can then speak on behalf of others who are in that situation because they've actually been there. And I think there's a big difference between those who are just successful. That's great in and of itself and it's aspirational. But those who are then prepared to put a ladder out for whom others can then climb up and help them reach success as well. That, that's what he's doing and that's what we're all hoping to do. And that, that's like another step. And why shouldn't sport be used for that? It's one of the most powerful things on the planet. And the things that we see in sport, whether that's, you know, around Black Lives Matter or, you know, helping any area of racial issues, whether it's gender, disability, sexuality, class, whatever it might be, you know, that can manifest in all other aspects of society. So it is really, really important, the progress that we're making in sport, because it touches so many people's lives, it impacts people in so many ways because of some of the reasons that Flo alluded to. So I think sport and people involved in sport absolutely should use whatever platform they've got for that. I think in terms of women's sport, yeah, it has had the negative, you know, it's flagged up some negative things and some major disparities. But let's see that as a positive. You know, we don't only just want to keep talking about how badly it's impacted women's sport. Some women's sports it has, some women's sport. It's not like women's sport is just the same everywhere. You know, there's some athletes, Serena Williams will be all right. Do you know what I mean? She's not in the same pot as like your, your local football team or girls academies that have just had to stop altogether. So one, which shouldn't be, you know, overly generic. There are differences in, in the sports. And I think in some sports, it's been great, you know, in, in professional women's boxing, for example. It's meant that because shows haven't relied upon ticket sales, women have had that platform on massive exposure to fight on massive shows. And now suddenly people are saying, oh, they're really good. We've been good for ages, just nobody's seen us. And now they've been able to see us. Women's rugby the other week got an opportunity on Free to View on the BBC. Fantastic. Maybe that wouldn't have happened without COVID, who knows? So I do think there are a lot of positives. And in terms of the negative bits, let's take this opportunity to change it. We now know we need to fund it differently, it needs to be sustainable. It needs to not be packaged with men's. You can have the men's FA Cup and then the other one. You can have the rights to the men's Premier League and then some of the women's stuff. Let's package it as something valuable in and of itself, because it is, because of the phenomenal athletes in all of the sports. That's what we should do going forward and that's the lesson that I've taken from it.
And Stacey, do you think, because you alluded to boxing not always being on TV or promoted as well, is there still a generation of boxers out there that are susceptible to match fixing, susceptible to a lack of integrity because they're not earning enough? Maybe their livelihood's been damaged by a pandemic? There's a variety of reasons, but in short, would a female athlete in boxing be more likely to cheat, match fix or do something untoward because they can't sustain themselves in the current climate?
Absolutely not, absolutely not, no. Not even going to answer that anymore, no. And there, there's no difference in any of that corruption between male or female. Boxing is a corrupt sport in general and that's because it's a business and it's run like a business. And there aren't any governing bodies who are accountable for anything other than profit and money and maximising certain figures, you know, which sometimes comes over and above integrity. So no, absolutely not. And I think you'll find far less women who'll fix it than men because when we're given the opportunities to take any fight that we get, we will. You know, women aren't ducking fights and trying to do it because, because You know, women aren't ducking fights and trying to do it because, because there is less money in it. Maybe when there's massive money on the table, who knows, that might happen, but at the minute there isn't. So absolutely, definitely not.
And Cameron, let me get your thoughts on this because I think even though I appreciate Stacey's point, we do see a pattern. I don't know whether you see this at the Court of Arbitration for Sport in the field of doping. But I think we do see a pattern of those that struggle more, those that get paid less, being more susceptible to match fixing, to potentially doping. Is that a worry? Is that a pattern you see? Or do you agree with Stacey that?
Question. You said, would women be more likely to do it, not people who get paid less? Well, I mean, you're quite right, maybe people who get paid less, but not specifically women, but go on.
You're right, Stacey. Thanks for flagging that. I only used the point of women to you because you alluded to women boxers in your fields being paid less than men. But it wasn't a question specific to sex and absolutely correct to point that out. So to extend on that, Cameron, what is your take? Who are the people more susceptible to a lack of integrity that you see at the Court of Arbitration for Sport?
So Ben, I'll, I'll speak to doping cases because that's, I've just, you know, heard many, many of those. And, and also, you know, I competed for a long time in, in an era prior to the existence of the World Anti-Doping Agency. So I, the first year I was on the national team for Luge, I competed against women from East Germany who were my height and about, you know, 50 pounds heavier than me. And I thought, oh, they must train really hard. I was 15. And, and they're like, yeah, that and a really good doping programme. So, so I think the, I think the temptation to engage in doping is, is, is multifold. You know, Stacey, you know, talked about boxing being a business and, you know, sport generally is, is a business now. And athletes have an opportunity to, to make money through sponsorships and endorsement deals. If they're, you know, maybe at the first or second rank in the world in their, in their sport. So a lot of athletes are, are willing to, to break the rules to get there. And I don't know if I want to say a lot of athletes. It's, you know, I would never, I never did anything like that. I would never consider it. I would rather be whatever, fifth than win a gold with, with doping. But, you know, it's so I, I think there's the temptation of, of being able to make more money as a result of, you know, finishing higher up the, up the ranks. And also in, in some sports, track and field, cycling, weightlifting, there, and many athletes are, are using performance enhancing drugs. And so that other athletes think, oh, like I can't perform at that level unless I am using as, as well. So, so cheating, you know, really impacts everyone, particularly the, the clean athletes. So I think it's, it's on, on the doping, whether it's doping or match fixing or whatever other breach of integrity and ethics, I think we all have an obligation to, you know, to work toward clean sport.
So we've looked a little bit about who's susceptible. We've talked about campaigning. We've touched upon gender equality. Obviously loads of big topics that we could delve into all day. Oda, and then I'll open it up to everyone else. One thing that we haven't focused on yet is specifically racism and Black Lives Matter. I was reading an interview with Macbeth Sebaia, the former Bafana, Bafana International. And he said, and this was only last year, that racism in South Africa is worse than any other country that I have played in. That's a direct quote. What's your response to that? And how has Black Lives Matter and its integration with football benefited you and the sport?
To answer your first question in terms of the South Africa situation. Yeah, South Africa, you know, I've, I've, I've had the honour of living in, in many countries. I've, I've lived in the USA. I was there for four years doing my university degree. And obviously in Europe, I got the, I got, I was, I lived in Finland. I, my home is married to a Dutch guy. I live in Holland also. And I've got the honour of travelling all across Europe. And unfortunately, coming from South Africa and visiting all these countries. You know, I, it, I would say, yes, it is, it is very much racism. It is very much alive. Obviously, given the fact that apartheid only was only abolished less than 30 years ago. So, you know, so the, they're still a generation. And, and, and part of that generation, some of them have taught their children, you know, to, you know, to, to continue to think a certain way that they, that they grow up in. So, so South Africa still has a way to go, but it has come quite a long way. I'm sure things are much better than what they, they were before. You know, there is still right across a lot of gender inequality, high crime against women, gender violence, high gender, high, you know, race equality in terms of the pay gap between still what, what most white people would get to what a black person would get that is doing the same amount of, amount of work. So, so the country still has a way to go, but it has also come quite a long way. You know, just it's, it's, it's in progress. It's in progress. With the whole Black Lives Matter situation, the, one of the things that I feel like it has, it has done, it, it is that it has opened a lot of people's eyes to what most black people already knew was happening and what they had experienced, what we had experienced all of our lives. It's, it's so hard to, to explain to, 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 to someone, something that they have never experienced, that they have never seen. And that, and that it has never happened to them. It's so hard to experience, to, to explain what that is. Because sometimes it's, it's unexplainable. It's, it's, you know, it's, 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 it's something that you, you know what it is, but it's so hard to explain what it is. And, and for the people on the other side, it's hard for them to see it because they have not grown up seeing it. They've not experienced it firsthand. So what Black Lives has done, it's just, it's, it's shown a light on, on, and it allowed people, people, some scales to fall off of some people's eyes and they were able to see a little bit clearer, not completely. But I, I know that on my team that I was playing for, a lot of, you know, a lot of the girls were talking about it a lot more and they were like, I can't believe this sort of things actually happen. I never knew this, this is something that is even still a problem in, you know, in this day and age. And all those things and, and, you know, and as a black person, like, yep, you know, it's, yep, it happens, you know, it has been happening. So, so in that part, it has been, it has been a brilliant thing in terms of people, a lot more people are able to understand what, what black people and what black athletes have, you know, go through and what they experience. So it's an unfortunate, it came out of an unfortunate situation, but maybe it was something that was necessarily to, to lift the lid of a situation that needed to be exposed.
Stacey, your thoughts?
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, I've not had those experiences myself, but as Odi said, I think it's, I think it's been, well, hopefully, let's hope it's the sign of some real change. That's all we can hope for is that now. I think that there are always going to be parts of society who makes you deeply saddened to think you're probably not going to be able to change them. They might have very, very ingrained racist perceptions. They might have very misogynist ideas. It might, you know, might be very homophobic or whatever it might be. I think there are some people who we're not going to be able to change and that, that makes you deeply sad. And if you focus on that cohort too much, it can get you very, very disheartened. But I think, as Odi said, what's happened is it's made loads of people see things completely differently and, and see other people's points of view. And as I say, all we can hope is that this is a real step towards change, I hope. But then I know that change is, is never, never easy, no matter what you're trying to change. And I think you, you have these moments where you think, yes, we've reached this, this certain mountain. And then something else happens and you think, oh, how's, how's this not fixed? You know, it's, it's really disheartening, but I think it can't stop. You know, it can't stop us fighting for what's right. That's, that's my view. So I agree with everything that Odi said and I just really hope. All I can add to it is that I hope it's a, a real, genuine, long lasting change.
Flo, Les Ferdinand in football spoke of the need to turn actions into change and said over time he'll be worried that just kneeling as a footballer or a sports star for Black Lives Matter could become a bit blasé. I think it has impact. I think it has pertinence, but I certainly understand his perspective that if all sports stars do is kneel in solidarity and all of them choose to do it over time, will need a next step. How do you feel as an athlete about the kneeling and what do you think the next step might be?
Um, yeah, as an athlete, I have personally been doing this within our rugby team through the start of the season. And whether it becomes blasé or not, what has made it happen is it's brought it to the forefront of our attention. We've not just talked or looked at it. We've actively done something and taken that and shown our support and our solidarity. And it has allowed that conversation to come to the forefront. It's not that thing that we are acutely or not acutely aware of. It's now something that we're actively talking about and being willing and wanting to educate themselves because those conversations have to happen, however uncomfortable or comfortable people may be with it. But the fact that it is now in the forefront of media and in the forefront of sport, it has created a mechanism for that conversation to get into people's living rooms, to get into family life, to get into daily life when you're watching sport. Now, we haven't forgotten that Black Lives Matter is still important. So we are still going to kneel at the start of our game. Yes, we're here for sport, but we're also here to show solidarity in another sense. And yes, just kneeling at the start of every game. That's not just a tick box. Let's, okay, we'll just keep doing that for the season and that's it. We do need to continue for change and push and to keep these conversations going. But in some cases, the kneel, it shows, okay, maybe we haven't actively done something or visibly done something today. But the kneels, we're still thinking about it, we're still respectful of it and we're still willing to learn and talk about it. And this isn't something that's going to go away. This isn't a flash in the pan. This is something that we're representing and continue to represent and we want to still learn and talk about and to progress further and be, be thankful for the progress that we've had, but be aware that it is just progress on a journey. Like the top of that mountain is, is going to be continuous. You're going to reach what you think is a peak and it's actually, okay, this is just a progressive point and somewhere that we can continue from here. And it is incredibly unfortunate that it has to happen in the way that it has happened in the last six months. Like, why do we need to see horrific scenes on social media for people to spark change? And I'm not naive and not thinking that that is an individual case. It won't be, but it's happened in a way that it has sparked conversation and the fact that sport has taken its opportunity to bring people together and start this conversation and education and giving people a platform to talk about it, I think is a brilliant thing for sport to do and to continue to do.
Cameron, I guess one of the next steps is not just in protest, is not just in education, but is in actually having a diverse boardroom and ensuring that our teams and their boardrooms and our law courts, even if we're talking about the Court of Arbitration for Sport, are all reflective of society.
So I was thinking the exact same thing as, as Flo was, was speaking. And I also, to, to follow up on Odi and Stacey's comments, I just wanted to point out that, you know, it was in 1968, so more than 50 years ago, that Tommy Smith and Giancarlo stood on the medal podium after winning gold and bronze and raised their fists to, you know, create awareness like, hey folks, like we, okay, we're the best in the world on this day, but civil rights movement is going on in the United States and people are, you know, fighting for equality. So I just want to point that out because what? It's like 50 years ago and like, let's create some change. So yeah, Ben, to your point about the boardroom, so important. So it's, of course, we want to see equality on the, on the playing field, but equality off the playing field is, is equally as important. And the value of having a diverse board, of having, you know, diverse committees and the, the staff who, you know, work in the offices of the FAs or, you know, sport organisations on a daily basis. The conversations are much more robust and diverse if the people engaged in those conversations are as well. So, so I, I think that's, that's on, you know, on us to, to, to be involved in that kind of change. And I, I think a number of my students are hopefully on the, on the call today and it's a sport governance class. And, and I, you know, we've been talking about all semester, how important it is sort of the, the governance of an organisation, you know, the rules matter. Who sits on the board matters. Who gets to vote and participate in that process really makes a difference as to like what, you know, what happens on a daily basis. So I couldn't agree with you more on the, on your point about the, on the board and the, the organisations that are part of these conversations.
And part of SEGA's remit is to give youth a voice and allow them to have a meaningful impact. And that's why in the context of today, we've been asking our SEGA Youth Council members to put questions directly to panelists. And Stacey, we've got one for you now. So I can throw the floor over to the United Kingdom. And we can hear from a SEGA Youth Council member, Oliver Hines, who has a contribution for you, Stacey.
My name is Ollie Hines and I'm a law student at Durham University. I also captain the university's boxing club and I'm a proud member of the SEGA Youth Council, where I form part of the research team. I've got a couple of questions for Stacey Copeland. Firstly, what does Stacey see as the biggest issue regarding integrity in boxing? And secondly, if you could change anything in boxing, what would it be and why? It had to be one change. Thank you.
Okay, I guess the, the integrity part of it might be that money is almost always put before anything else, in my opinion. Other people might see it differently. But I think sometimes fighters are put at risk. And I think the integrity of the sport in general is put at risk. I think some of the, sometimes some of the behaviour of the boxers publicly, away from press conferences and things, I'm not just talking about how they do that to build up a fight. Actual things that they do is, is often just ignored. And I think in other sports it wouldn't be. And I don't see why it should be held to a different standard. And so long, you know, sometimes they'll just fine them instead of actually, you know, and it's the same with, I know it's been the same in some cases with, with those who fail drug tests, you know, and you're not talking about people who are struggling for money. We're talking about people who've got plenty in the pocket and yet they've still done it and they've just given them a fine. And sometimes they've said, you know, you've got a fine and a three month ban. Well, at the top level, you don't box for three months anyway. So they've actually not suffered any consequences. So, but it's, who's that money going to? You know, I, I've been in all sorts of situations because of money with boxing, which I won't go into because it'll take too long. But and I, I think that's one of the problems is the, is that there's no accountability and at least with, you know, other governing bodies. Because ours is, you know, the, the Boxing Council is, is a company. At the end of the day, it's not run as a governing body. So therefore they're not, therefore they're not accountable. That was the British Boxing Council ghost that's come after me because I've just said that. And there's not like with other, you know, if they're funded by UK sport or they're associated with the Olympic Committee or something like that, there's a a kind of, you know, integrity that goes with it. That's an expectation and that's not the case in boxing. They're all independent. Like the, the belts that you fight for, the titles, they're all independently run. And yeah, so I think money, as with most problems in the world, doesn't seem to do any good for anyone, but there you go. And if I could change one thing, it's dead simple. I'd change that nobody ever get hurt in the sport, but then I'd change that about every sport. Because I'd love it if we could all compete in every sport and never ever get hurt. The difference in boxing is that it can be, you know, there can be fatalities, which is horrendous, but so can there be in other sports. But if I could change anything, it'd be something completely unrealistic. And I'd have it that we'd never ever get injured because every athlete would love that anyway. So that'd be the one thing I'd change.
And Stacey, just on that point, another area perhaps we've not touched upon yet is sort of life after sport. Would you like to see more funding and research put into the longer term impact of boxing? I know football's doing the same with like heading footballs and dementia. Is enough being done to protect athletes specifically in boxing, male and female, after they retire through things like research, through things of course, also like helping them find other jobs and work?
To be honest, Ben, there's not enough done for fighters during the career. It's extremely difficult to get any type of health insurance as a professional athlete, full stop. health insurance as a professional athlete, full stop. But when you add in a combat sport like boxing, it's almost impossible to get any kind of coverage. So then if it's a fighter who relies on boxing for their livelihood or one who works and then the injury in boxing then has obviously a massive knock-on effect on their ability to earn a living. Uh. There's enormous consequences, the rehabilitation after an injury, et cetera, et cetera. So yeah, there's more that needs to be done after, but there's, we're not getting it right for during people's careers. We don't support people properly during their careers at all, uh, whether that's physically, mentally or otherwise. So there's loads, loads more to be done in the sport. I'm sure others are the same, but in ours in particular, without a doubt, there's a lot more to be done.
Um. Oda, Stacy mentioned mental health. The English Football Association last season ran a campaign called Heads Up, which was about promoting the value of mental fitness. How draining do you find it as a professional footballer? Obviously, there's lots of different categories at elite levels. Some people are fortunate that they can focus only on football at a slightly lower tier, but still within professional football. Many players have to juggle two jobs. That can affect your mental health. They have to pay bills and they don't get a just wage. What's your take on how football has impacted your mental health?
Um. How football has impacted my mental health? I guess for, I can only speak on behalf of female um pro player because we are obviously um in a different ballgame to um to the male, to our male counterparts, which, you know, which obviously I I know I've played, this season in particular, I've played with quite a few um older females and I know a few older females on the national teams um that if you were to ask them, um, what are you going to do after soccer because you are more at the end of your career and then at the beginning or in the middle, they would, they would uh two out of three of them that are asked, they said, oh, I have no idea. I don't even want to think about it. Which, you know, which is, which is sad uh because, you know, it is soccer, it is eventually coming to an end and two they just, they mentally can't get themselves to that point where where they, you know, where they can think about what's next because one, they're, they are not, majority of female soccer players are not getting paid anywhere near enough to 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 sort of build on something after soccer. Many female soccer players after soccer have to start back to square one in terms of especially financially, you know, then we are, we won't, we don't end our careers with with a cushion of savings. Uh, because a lot of the times there's not much to save from our salaries that we get. So to so to to think about the future, when when, especially if 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 you don't have an education um and if you don't, if you don't have a decent saving account to to build something out outside of soccer, mentally it can be draining, it can be castropho-, you know, catastrophobic to think about it. Um. It can be depressing also. Um. A lot of uh, those are some, some of the things that a lot of female players struggle with, especially without education, you know, because without education, you 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 would go from playing professional to um to, you know, to like, to to like the very basic uh entry level job, which is absolutely nothing, nothing wrong with that, but you would be like a thirty-five-year-old, you know, with like a twenty-year-old job, given that you you spent ten, fifteen years of your life playing soccer, but many female players at the end of it have very little to show um of that career, which uh, which mentally um that's why a lot of the girls are struggling with with um with 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 giving up the sport. Uh, uh, they they might end up hanging up, hanging on much longer than what they should be because there's a lot of the times there's nothing on the on the other side to let go of.
Yeah, that's really interesting stuff. And Flo, a similar question to you. Rugby unfortunately has been hit quite hard by the COVID nineteen pandemic. How has the last nine months or so affected you and your teammates' mental health?
Um. I've been quite lucky at Wasps, the team that we've had. Uh, we had Zoom meetings every week and we had a really active discussion, even if we can physically be together, but to be digitally together as much as we possibly could and created a lot of engaging tasks for us to do, whether it was um quizzes or which I'm sure everyone has done more quizzes than they've ever imagined they would have done in their lives in the last nine months. Um, uh, but running challenges, distance covering challenges, cycling challenges, we did, we did as much as we possibly could to to keep the the mental side ticking over and we were constantly aware that this is for now, sport will return and how how well we prepared ourselves during that time would determine whether we will be successful when our return. And I think every team athlete knows the joys of preseason and a nine-month-long preseason is probably nothing that anybody ever wants, but it means that you're the most prepared you'll ever be in your life supposedly. Um. And you actually learn to appreciate your sport more. So as a um a female athlete, like a lot of our training during the evening, because a lot of girls have jobs as well as their sport. And um I had every single evening off for all of those nine months and it was great, but as I came back into my sport, I thought, actually, I'm never going to complain that I'm going to miss an evening of my life because I've actually just had loads of them and they're not that interesting. After week three, you're like, I kind of wish I was running around with my mates now. Um. So it definitely makes you have some perspective on your sport and be grateful for it. And it, we came back into it with like a new lease of life and we're very lucky. We're the only um Women's League that are playing in the UK at the moment. Um. So I am, as much as that nine months was hard, I'm incredibly grateful for the fact that we are back and there are a lot of people who are still in that situation. Um. And how you prepare yourself during that time, it will determine your success coming back into it. And I think women's sport especially during COVID had a lot of time to reassess itself and look at itself and be like, right, what do we need to change? Um. What areas are we still not happy with? What can we change going back into this to do it right and have a little bit of a reset? Um. Especially from funding and broadcast point of views, because we haven't had uh um fans at our games. A lot of our games have been streamed, which has been brilliant. It's actually increased the um amount of streams fixtures we've had tenfold this season. It's it's been madness because people can't watch it and it actually has meant that not only have the game been accessible to rugby fans who want to watch it, but like locality has not been an issue. Like before it was if you're in London, you might be able to get to a game, but now like you could be in Australia and you can watch our game. And it's actually broadened our audiences and because there isn't as much sport on TV, we're not fighting off the competition of fifteen other sports happening on Saturday. Couple of weeks ago, we were the only live rugby match to be on the UK on that Saturday in November or, I'm sorry, in October, and that is absolutely unheard of. We would have otherwise been competing against five or six other fixtures that day, but because of the way COVID has happened and the fact that not much other sport is on, our game was the only live rugby match on in the UK that weekend, which actually intensified our audience numbers and gave us the opportunity to to grow it and be on a platform that we'd actually never been on before. I think COVID was quite interesting. It actually equaled the playing fields across all sport. For once, everyone was in the same boat, whether you were getting paid two hundred and fifty grand a week or whether you were playing Sunday League football with your mates, everyone was doing press ups in the lounge. That's how it was. And it kind of made everyone appreciate what they have and where they can get to. Um. And appreciate other people who were in that boat with you rather than being, being in your own bubble of an amazing facility, getting paid loads of money and being on TV every week. It actually put everyone on that same platform. Uh, I think it's actually given women's sport um an opportunity to look at yourself and and grow from COVID. And yeah, mentally it has been tough for everyone. I won't deny that at all, but um I think in female sport, I will say lucky in inverted commas that we've always dealt with adversity. So COVID um was at least an adversity that everyone was dealing with rather than the adversity of being a female rugby player, that a very small proportion of the athletes in the UK are.
Going to start to wrap things up in a moment so we can get everyone out by five o'clock, not that unfortunately at the moment, if you're in the UK, you've got a pub or anywhere that you can go to, but Cameron, let me bring you in on the broader point because of course we all advocate mental fitness and mental health, but in its own, that's not necessarily integrity related directly. It's just very good practice. But a lack of mental health can lead you to poor decisions in the integrity field. What's your take therefore on the impact of the pandemic to integrity? Over the last nine months, what might it lead to that we don't yet know about? For example, in doping, is there a chance that people will stop doping over nine months and it will wean out their system? Is it an opportunity to dope over nine months when you're not competing and be undetected or is testing still taking place? Uh. So talk to me broadly or specifically in doping, depending on your preference, uh about that impact to integrity during the pandemic.
Uh, I I think doping is an interesting topic during the pandemic because uh more toward the your second comment, you know, are people doping more? Uh, yeah, I think there there is a lot of concern that that people um are not being, athletes are not being tested as much uh and therefore have a little more license to take performance-enhancing substances uh and by the time they're competing again, we'll have all of those out of their uh system. Uh. I know USADA, the US Anti-Doping Agency, uh was trying some um like virtual uh drug testing. So a number of athletes who had never tested positive, like Katie Ledecky and and others, uh signed up to uh to uh test out the new program and and I mean, I think it it worked to some extent, but you know, there, I think there is a lot of concern of organizations and athletes who are not cheating, uh that other, others who might be tempted to do so could uh do do so more easily during uh during COVID. Uh. And then, you know, another uh result of of COVID is that some athletes who were serving out a sanction as a result of a positive test, who would otherwise, you know, who wouldn't have been able to compete in the Olympics had they happened this past summer, now will be finished with those sanctions and can, you know, compete, uh can compete next year. So uh, but that's uh, I guess, lucky, lucky for them. But as a, as a lawyer, I mean, I definitely am of the view that if you, once you've served whatever uh sanction uh is is imposed, then then you should be done. Um. But if I could just quickly follow up on uh Stacy's comments about, you know, transition uh from sport and I guess everyone's comments, but it's, it's really difficult for athletes to go from, you know, competing on a a professional basis to a to a job after sport. And I think sport organizations have an obligation, really, uh to support those athletes who have given so much of their time and effort uh and, you know, love for the sport. And and most of the time, it's love for the sport because, I mean, certainly uh if you're, you're competing in luge or uh, you know, any number of uh small Olympic sports, you do it because you love it and you want to, you know, challenge yourself mentally and physically, uh but not because you're getting paid a lot of money. So so I I do think organizations need to, need to step up and and provide uh more support to athletes as they transition uh to their next careers.
Thank you very much for that. And Stacy, I'm going to give you the final word, one because you're a latecomer, so naturally you get a bit more airtime than everyone else at the back end of this discussion, but also because I've asked you some of the more difficult and longer questions. So I'm going to flip it to finish with and allow you to give your closing thoughts on what you want to see from organizations like Seeger. Call out whoever you feel you need to call out, whether it's us or whether it's other organizations going forward, rather than just words. What needs to be done and how can an organization like Seeger, for which you're a champion, help?
Um. I think, I think there's a number of ways. I think obviously representation, as as everybody's mentioned, is so, so important. Um. I think it's, I mean, we see it not just in sport, but I don't know whether you've seen, for example, this week with the new children's film, The Witches. Uh, I'm a big fan of Roald Dahl, but they've portrayed the witches as having uh fingers missing. Um. And that's how you identify a witch. And they're hiding them under the glove and a lot of, you know, my friends who I happen to know who are Paralympians, but then also a lot of, you know, people with disabilities or not, but particular people with disabilities have spoken out about it and said, why are we still doing this? And and you just think if there perhaps have been someone part of that decision-making process who could have said, look, I actually experienced that as a child of being made to feel different and, you know, having feel like I had to hide a a part of me that actually makes me amazing and unique. And maybe we shouldn't be passing in passage, this message on to young people. That's just one tiny example of it. Um. I see it all the time in boxes. I'm sure Flo sees it in rugby and Odie sees it in uh football and and Cameron seeing it in in, well, a whole variety of sports, but I'm sure now if you haven't got people who understand what it's like to be someone else, it's very difficult for them to make decisions. And I had, just to finish making that point, I had a conversation with uh somebody um not so long ago um who kind of said, you don't need people. It was, it was about the the lack of uh represent, you know, representation on the boards because it was saying like as low as four percent um of of ethnic minorities are represented on sports boards. And, you know, I was saying that's, you know, why, why is it like that? Why haven't we looked at this before? And they said, well, I don't think it's important. And I said, what do you mean it's not important? And they said, well, you don't have to be like from a certain group or whatever. And I said, of course you do. I know that as a female boxer. And they said, well, you know, I I could think differently. And I said, how can you think like a person who before every single fight has to have a pregnancy test? How can you think like someone who thinks, where do I get that? How do I get the results before the British Boxing Board? Because it's kind of my private business. What happens if I'm happened to be menstruating and I have to walk past everybody in that room with that sample? When do I have it? How does it affect my performance in the fight? How can you think like that? You're definitely not going to be pregnant and you don't have to do that. So that's one tiny example that of course it helps because somebody in the room can say, actually, this affects us differently. So I think representation, I think people being brave enough who've got decision-making positions and influences need to step up and make these decisions and be brave enough to make them and do things differently. We've been doing things the same way for ages and it it's not working. And we've got a generation of kids that are having to unlearn what they've been taught about race, what they've been taught about women in sport, what they've been taught about, all these groups of people, it just isn't true. We have to unlearn it and unteach it. So let's start and do it better. Um. And that has surely has to come from the top. Um. But if not, then we can do it from from ground up if if needs be. So and I think the role of Seeger is doing exactly what they're already doing. Discussions like this are really important. And, you know, the the bronze, gold, uh, wait, bronze, silver and gold uh targets that they have for everybody to me are really measurable targets that, you know, all organizations can aim to. And I think that's a that's a really beneficial thing. And I just want to say what a privilege it's been to be part of this panel, uh, listening to Flo, Cameron and Odie. It's been absolutely fantastic. I've really enjoyed listening to you all. So uh, thanks very much. I've, I've, I know I'm supposed to be a participant, but I really enjoyed listening to everyone else. So, and thanks, Ben.
Yeah, me too. And it's a shame that we can't delve in and hear more because it's such a broad area and I think you've all done really well and been extremely eloquent in not only telling us your opinions, but giving people something to tangibly think about, which is so important. Seeger is all about action over just words alone. So thank you to all of you, to Stacy for that excellent summary, to Cameron, to Flo and to Oda as well, and to the latter two. We wish you well with your ventures on and off the field and Stacy, keep championing everything that you do. And Cameron wears about a hundred different hats and it's great to hear your academic, your legal and your sporting opinion. So thank you to all of you for your time. It's been great having your company.
Thanks very much. Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.
So that ends our panel. Thanks to our first panel. Thanks to our Seeger Youth Council members for your questions. Thank you to you for listening and for engaging as well. We've had lots of questions through YouTube as well. And we'll try and put you in contact and network with some of our panelists at request as well. But just before we wrap up, we've got five minutes or so of testimonials about Seeger to play to you. These are from athletes, including some of our Seeger champions. We've also got a statement from Ethan Cucarazi and we'll hear from Gonzalo Mederos and Feik Jeffrey Bolkia, who are both footballers for CS Maritimo. So all of this is coming to you now in a big group series of testimonials. Do have a listen and then after that, we will wrap things up for the day.
Hello, my name is Madina Kelmendi, Olympic gold medalist from Kosovo and I'm a Seeger champion. As a professional athlete, I know how important is sport integrity because it creates uh fairness of competition. As athlete, I always want to make sure that I can win the title that I deserve without any kind of of corruption. Judo as a sport is known for for respect and fair play. So thanks God, during my career, I didn't have any kind of of bad experience. But I I But I, I invite the young people, the young athletes to join, to join the SEGA movement.
Hi, my name is Axel Sola and I am a SEGA champion. I am an MMA athlete and I've been European champion and two-time world silver medalist. Sport integrity creates fairness of competition and ensure athletes are competing on a level playing field. As a champion, it is important that I know I am winning the title I deserve and there is no form of corruption. Being a SEGA champion means even more than just being a champion because it means I choose the hardest path to the top. And that just makes me even more proud of my accomplishment.
My name's Stacey Copeland. I'm a professional boxer and the current Commonwealth champion. I'm also a SEGA champion. One of the things I love most about sport is it doesn't matter what your background or where you come from. If you're talented and you're willing to be dedicated, then you've got the chance to be successful in sport. I think it's really important that that chance to be successful is fair for everybody. I also think as athletes, that we have both the responsibility and the privilege of being role models. This is my niece Ruby. She's nine years old and she's just started cross-country running. I really want us all to work hard to make sure that she and other young people can look forward to being part of a, a safe and clean environment at sport. So that she can compete as her best self and compete against others who are their best self. Because as we know, sport can bring out the very best in all kinds of people. So thank you, SEGA, for all the work that you're doing.
I'm Kelly Santos. I'm a professional basketball player. And now I fight for a fair living in the sports life for young athletes in Brazil. For this to happen, I believe that sports authorities should take SEGA's steps and care about integrity in our environment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gonçalo Derch. I'm 21 years old and I play for Club Sport Maritim da Madara. The world is facing challenging times right now. The second COVID-19 wave is causing damage and affecting our lives in every way. We athletes feel it too, but we must remain positive and keep our confidence high. Let's all play our part so we can all win this fight against COVID. To SEGA, I express my things. Thanks for giving us athletes an opportunity to encourage others.
Hi, my name is Ethan Cucariz and I currently serve on the communications team with the SEGA Youth Council. And I am currently a third year undergraduate student at the George Washington University here in Washington DC in the United States. I am incredibly humbled and honored to have the opportunity to serve on the Youth Council with so many impressive young leaders from around the world. I'm super excited to continue working on our communications message and our campaign as we highlight our SEGA Youth Forum and we continue to, to spread our message of integrity on and off the field around the world. Certainly one of the most inspirational athletes I've looked up to growing up here in America has been LeBron James. From the time he set foot into the NBA as an 18 year old, he's been an icon and has served as an incredible role model for so many young people here in America and around the world.
Hi, I hope you're all safe and well and keeping your spirits high in these challenging times. My name is Amirovato, the goalkeeper of Maritim and Iran's national team. Very proud to be a member of Maritim Club. Since the very start of this pandemic, they made their foundations available to all the hospital facilities and medical workers, which I think play the key role to in promoting health and safety measures for the public. As a football player, I feel it's my duty to raise the awareness and funds for this cause and to help as many as possible through this foundation. I am certain that by helping one another, we can put this behind us in no time.
Hello, my name's Fike Jeffrey Bolkia. I'm a football player at Maritim. And I just want to let everyone know that I hope everyone's following the guidelines of the experts and hope everyone is staying home and staying safe so we can all get through this together. I feel, I feel proud to be part of Maritim because of the foundation Maritim has in helping everyone get through this. And in football, I think we have a big part to play in helping everyone so we can get through this together and get back, get everything back to normal. So I just hope everyone's staying safe and staying at home.